Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the February 19, 2013 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Member Bennett would like to add an item to the agenda and we decided under 8B we would add the Construction Management Plan if you would modify your agendas accordingly and then I'll entertain a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda.
So moved in second.
Got a motion in the second on the form of meeting agenda with the addition at 8B. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next, the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved in second.
Moved in second, we approve the consent agenda, which is, or the items under Roman four. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Now, we're going to move into the special presentations portion of the agenda. We have no special recognitions tonight. First, we have John Gunyou with us, who's coming up, and he is the former city manager, longtime city manager in Minnetonka. Joined me on Saturday for a walk with the mayor over at Galleria, he and his wife Kim. And he got elected, John got elected after he retired to the Three Rivers Park District and no sooner was elected than elected chair of the Three Rivers Park District, here to make a presentation for us. John, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, I've pretty well flunked retirement from Minnetonka. I've had a lot of hats over the years and I have to say this is one of the most fun ones I've had. I represent Edina. My district includes Edina, Minnetonka, Hopkins, and Richfield, or as I like to say, the district without any Three Rivers Parks in it is the district I represent. We do have a lot of trails. We have, and soon to have, a new trail in Edina, finally, after many, many years. We have 22 parks with 28,000 acres in it. Most of those are located in the exurban areas, but the trails are something that have always been very important to me and so I'm glad to be part of that. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes tonight because I appreciate just the time you have. I wanted to reintroduce myself with my new hat on because I do represent the city and the residents here, but just to bring you up to date on kind of where we stand with Nine Mile Creek Trail. In fact, Mayor Hovland and Councilmember Swenson and I just met last week with our respective staffs to talk about the status of the trail and to see what we could do to move the construction forward a little sooner than was originally planned. As you probably know, we have half of the segments funded in Edina and we're reapplying then for funding for the western, for the western segment. It's about 15 miles in length, as you probably remember, with more than half of that through Edina. It's the missing link here. I'm confident, after working with the staff, I've only been on the job about a month, but it's near and dear to my heart, so in talking with the staff, I think we can, we have a very good chance of getting the funding approved for the second, for the second segment. What we're planning to do is to move forward with planning, doing the design planning for the entire trail through Edina at the same time. Whereas rather than just do one segment and then the other segment, is that in advance of getting the funding approved for the western segment, we'll do the planning all at the same time. That will start later this year and it takes about a year to do, and this is all the detailed planning, which in effect is, well, it's where the trail actually goes, you know, which side of the creek and which segments. It takes a lot of work with the individual neighborhoods and neighbors, so it takes a fair amount of time to go through that whole process. That planning, as I mentioned, will take place for the entire length of the Edina portion of the trail. We think by also doing that, it'll be shovel-ready then, so with any luck, we can, we will have the funding secured for the second, for the second segment and we can do the construction then at the same time. What that means is construction in '15 and '16. It takes a couple of years. Very expensive trail, obviously, with the overpasses and it's, you know, there are a number of bridges that we have to do. I think that when I said I think we're in good shape to get the second part of the funding is, this is the one missing link. And so it's a major link in the whole regional trail system and so I think by being the last link, I think that puts us closer to the top of the list. It also helps that both, both the mayor and I are on the Met Council Transportation Board, so I think between the two of us, we can, we can have some influence with those 30 people that make these kind of decisions. So I'm very, very confident that we can move ahead sooner than we thought with this, by a couple of years at least. I know it's a very difficult vote in order to get that done and I've always been of the mind as, once you make that decision, it's best to move ahead quickly rather than delay it once you've made that, made that tough decision. I wanted to mention one other thing that's a priority of mine and then I appreciate hearing, getting my marching orders from you too, as to what you might want to share, is one of the things that I've, I jokingly said that we're the district without any Three Rivers Parks in it. The inner ring suburbs by, kind of by definition, don't have a lot of our parks because it's, we bought a lot of land and developed and are preserving that land in the exurban areas because that's where we do that. The inner ring suburbs are mostly developed. I think we can do more from a programming standpoint and one of the things that I plan to push at Three Rivers, in fact, we have the first staff meeting later this week to talk about that possibility, is to do more outreach. We have exceptional education programs in our parks and our facilities that are natural resources, education, environmental education. We have educators on staff. Not everybody can get to those and I think it, I think there's an opportunity for us to take that show on the road more than we do already. And in particular, I'm thinking for seniors and students. I think working with the schools and senior centers and communities like that, I think we can, we can do a better job of making those resources available to the people that might be interested in that. I have jokingly called it a bookmobile with a live owl in it, but I think that's, maybe it's sort of caught on. So I think the idea is that we would take things to people rather than expect everyone to come to us. And I think that'll particularly benefit the areas in our district. I mean, because they're people that are not that close to some of our facilities and so it's an opportunity to see some of those nature centers up close. I know you-
And you might comment too on having already visited one of our Park and Rec staff members about doing a little bit better coordination work with the city of Edina.
We did start, in fact, on the walk and talk with the mayor on Saturday was a great opportunity to talk about some of those things.
Good. Questions for John or comments regarding the acceleration? Members, break.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on your election, Commissioner Gunyou.
Thank you.
And I like the idea of making the Three Rivers Park District work more visible in our community, although I'm a frequenter of Highland Reserve and I get to see all the great programming and natural resources that are under management there. It's great that we can bring some of your program aspects right here into Edina. With respect to the funding streams, so the eastern portion was approved, as we know, and then the western portion, when does that request go out and when do you think that will be granted? And then how are those two pools of funds? How do those come together?
Mayor and Councilmember Sprague, it's a, it's basically the same funding sources, so it would be a mirror of kind of how we put the first one together. They're on a two-year cycle though, so the approval would be in '15. Whereas we know for sure in '15 about when the construction will be going to bid and building things. There is a lag in when that's available. One of the things we were discussing with the mayor and Councilmember Swenson last week was some options we have to advance fund that. Basically, what you can do is borrow ahead on that. We issue bonds, as an example, in-
Revolving bonds?
Three Rivers. Excuse me?
Are those revolving bonds or?
Kind of, yeah. It's more like sort of construction bonds, so basically you, and then you pay them back when you get the funding that, there's an underlying funding source and so you pay them back at the same time. The other way to do that is it allows us to stage them. We have a, we have a 10-year CIP. Five is not enough, I guess. We have a 10-year CIP. So we, one of the things we're doing as a new board, we had a big turnover. There are five of the seven members are new. So one of the things I've done is to set up a committee to actually deal with that and we're taking a hard look at how all those projects are phased in that. One of the things, one of the things you do when you have that big a turnover is to look at the priorities and so some of us have a little different priorities than the former board. I've, I've made it clear that Nine Mile Creek is my number-one priority in my district, so that should hold some sway also to make sure some of that funding stream from our standpoint is closer than it was scheduled before.
You might also define for folks on the council and folks that would be watching at home, east, the east segment, the west segment, where it divides. It's an interesting place for division.
Quite simply, it's about the high school is kind of where it, the east and the west. So it's Southdale to the high school and then the high school to Hopkins. It's, I mean, that's overstating it or simplifying-
That's roughly accurate though, yep. Yep, Tracy Valley View.
But each segment includes a bridge over a highway.
Member Brindle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Again. I couldn't be happier to have you where you are. Looking at the two segments, I think it's important to understand why the east part, east section of the trail is a priority over the west and having that section be done first. The opinion I've heard is because there's more, the population's greater on the east side, the usage is more imminent on the east side. Would you agree with that?
Oh, Mayor and Councilmember Brindle, yes, new on the job, I certainly wouldn't second-guess the priorities.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's true. I think also just the difficulty being next to the creek and, you know, through the neighborhoods and all, the western section is going to take a little longer to plan because of the specific sightings of those and it, as you know, working with all the neighbors, it's, there's a great deal of time goes into that.
Yep. The other thing is, just looking back a number of years, parking has been free at the Three Rivers Park, Three Rivers Parks and we never hesitated at paying for parking there. It supported the overall Three Rivers Park District. With funding being strapped, is there a thought of trying to look at parking as a revenue source?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Brindle, that's, I mean, I think we're in the same situation. We're another form of local government. We have to look at every source. We haven't had any discussions, the new board hasn't had any discussions along those lines yet. I think we'd have to be very careful about where we do that. In other words, I think it oftentimes lends itself more toward enterprise activities, the ski areas, for example, that we run, rather than parks themselves. As you know, it's the trade-off about what's an enterprise activity and your tax dollars support, you know, parks in general. You should be able to walk out into a park. I think the sentiment of the new board is that while it might be looked at, I think some of us would have some difficulty in doing too much of that because it's just viewed as one of those things that you pay your taxes and you should have access to these. Except, I mean, there are obviously things like, you know, the marinas and the ski areas and those sorts of things where you do charge for.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Member Bennett.
Yes, Commissioner Gunyou, congratulations.
Thank you.
Going back to trail questions, I have a question about the process. You've described a design. We did approve as a council an alignment. What can residents look for in terms of their ability to either learn more about or actually participate in this design process as it goes forward?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Bennett, I, to oversimplify it, I'd say that they will be involved every step of the way. I mean, it's, it's a much more neighborhood-based process so that the actual, these will be the actual detailed drawings as to where the right-of-way will be, so it'll be done neighborhood by neighborhood. In other words, it, not everything all at the same time, but the process will obviously have to play together. But there'll be neighborhood meetings, multiple neighborhood meetings, there will be specific drawings about, you know, it'll be 10 feet from this line, those sorts of things. So it's always a little difficult, as you know, when you're just talking about, much like roadway, you know, say, well, generally it goes through here. This is the part where you say, this is exactly where it will be, they'll be staked so people can see exactly where it is. There'll be multiple opportunities for input. We've done this in many, many cases. We'll work very closely with the city engineers and planners, obviously, in doing this and to the extent that the council, I'm sure we like updates from time to time and we'd be more than happy to come back and do that.
Thank you.
I would say that we'll be overkill in amount of time. People will have the opportunity to weigh in on it.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else? Members, break.
Okay, so just to clarify the timing on things, assuming funding goes correctly and timely for the western portion, 2015, 2016 roughly would be the eastern portion being done and then 2016, 2017, the western portion. Something along those lines.
Mayor and Councilmember Sprague, actually, I'm hopeful that we can do it all in the '15 to '16.
'15, '16.
Oh, so 2015 east, 2016 west.
Yeah, I think now, obviously, there's sort of phasing that'll have to take place just from an engineering standpoint, but if everything goes well, I would certainly hope that we could construct the whole trail within that same two-year timeframe.
And does the creek restoration project run simultaneously with the-
Yes, absolutely. In fact, that's, you know, the multiple sources of funding, part of it is the, you know, from the watershed district, the creek for that. It's, I'm speaking a little generally now, but, you know, once we get into the, assuming the funding comes together and the planning all takes place at the same time, then there'll have to be decisions about how it's bid and then how it's, you know, do you start at one end, do you start at two ends, do you start, you know, how it's actually phased. But the idea, would it be all done at the same time? Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I should mention that earlier we were talking about construction '17, '18 was the, was what was on our plan, so I'm really hopeful we can move this up a year or two to get this done. If anything, just to get Edina residents to tap into, you know, if you go, if you go west, it's just a, I mean, it's a hub in Hopkins, you can go everywhere once you get there. Going east, the inner-city trail that's being constructed through, at the east side of Richfield, that'll run from the Grand Rounds at Lake Nacomas down, tie into this trail so, and then eventually down to the, down to the river. It's really, will open up the whole region to folks that like to bike and walk here.
Something you've said has caused Member Brindle to want to comment.
It has. It has. I was just going through the schedule in my mind and that is the construction, coincides with the construction of Southwest Light Rail, which comes close to, well, it comes to Opus, which is close to the trail as it is in the Bren Road area, about Bren Road and 169. So our challenge, since Southwest Light Rail doesn't come through Edina, is to get connections from Edina to Light Rail in the various areas where Light Rail is closest to us. So that'll be important for us there to put a spur from the trail to getting toward that Opus direction.
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Brindle, excellent point. In fact, much of what we do is very directly tied to the, to the light rail construction and, as you know, this gets into sort of the timing, so depending on when that proceeds and so do you do temporary spurs, do you do, but one of the, I always referred to it in my former life as the missing link, you know, when you get to some place and you can't get the two blocks over to there, so very cognizant of making sure things connect like that.
Good. Well, thanks for taking the time to come over tonight and-
Well, thanks for having me.
...make this presentation. It's exciting, I think, to know that we might be able to accelerate this project and get it into a '15, '16 build-out.
Well, fingers crossed and I'm hopeful we can continue to work together like this and get some of these things done. That's kind of my reputation. I, like, one of the reasons I did this, took this job, one of the reasons I agreed to be chair was I thought it might help get some more things done quicker than if I was just one out of seven, so, but thanks so much for having me.
Yes, you're welcome. Speaking of getting things done, some of us, some of you may remember, there was a time when we had a balanced state budget without too much problem and he was part of the reason for that. He was a finance director for when Governor Arnie Carlson was in office, so everything functioned pretty well. Did nice work there as well. Thanks, John. All right, now, we've got Greg Banco and Jason Doctor with us tonight. Good to see you. I don't think I've seen you since last year at the festival.
Correct.
And we're going to talk about something that is really a special thing in our town. Both of you guys, I remember visiting with both of you last year, and I'll let you introduce the topic and talk about what an exciting event this is for our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Gregory Banco. I work at Southview Middle School. I'm the academic supervisor for student support and this is kind of just a presentational information meeting to the council so you can get a sense of what we're doing in the community and what we're doing at schools. We know now that our schools are changing and looking internally, we see that even at Southview, we have students from perhaps 90-plus countries in the world and home languages are upwards of 20 languages. So as part of that, talking about connectivity, we know that if a student feels connected to the school, they do well. And Edina has such a rich academic achievement history that we know that as we get all of our students and we make up our student body, we need to make them feel like they're part of the school. So that being said, what we've done is we've created a celebration, a cultural celebration over the last two years and this year will be our third. That is a time where we recognize families, community members, students, and just where they come from and we've come together in a celebratory fashion over food, entertainment, student presentations. So we just wanted to present that to the council. So our mayor was there last year. I think you had a really good time there. We enjoyed having you.
I did.
We just wanted to put that out to everybody here tonight.
Jason, comments at all?
We need to know the details of that.
Yeah, I think Jason's going to give that.
That's what I got right here. I'm Jason Doctor. I'm the assistant principal at Southview and this is my first year there, but I've been in Edina for about 11 years now. And as you could tell, this is not so much a special presentation, but more as we wanted to come here and extend an invitation and to all the council members, to Mayor Hovland and to the larger community also. And so the event is actually taking place on March 21st and it's from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. It'll give us an opportunity to show off our new cafeteria as well. That's where a lot of the events will occur, but the whole first floor, we're going to have events. There's going to be dancing, there'll be student presentations, student poetry and music, and also international crafts. And so we're really hoping that you can attend and enjoy and that the community comes out and sees the rich cultural heritage that we have here in Edina.
No, I can't resist asking this. Last year, I think there were foods from over 40 countries and I tried to get as many of them in as I could. I didn't hear you say anything about food. There will, as there-
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. We'll have the same setup as last year, hopefully even better. So that was a big draw, just the idea of tasting the sense of heritage that people bring with them and the pride that people have with it is really good. Come, bring your appetite. We'll be glad to hear it.
All right, good. Thanks. Councilmembers, any questions for Gregory or Jason? All right, good. Thanks for coming to make the presentation.
Thank you.
It's going to be wonderful for people in our community to see this on television, so, thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll see you on the 21st. All right, and the next topic we have from a presentation standpoint involves the airport and the Noise Oversight Committee and Manager Neil wants to introduce this topic. We've got some folks with us from Chad Leckvie is here and John Bergman, our at-large rep. Manager Neil.
Thank you, your honor. We've been discussing aviation noise issues in the community and at the council for a couple of months now and we've had a request that was honored by the Metropolitan Airports Commission, specifically by the Noise Oversight Committee, to gain membership on the Noise Oversight Committee, which you'll probably hear us recall the NOCC as this presentation goes on. But we have two officials from the NOCC that are here tonight to make a presentation to you about aviation noise in general and more specifically about the NOCC. Chad Leckvie is a staff member at the Metropolitan Airports Commission and John Bergman is a city council member for the city of Apple Valley and also serves as the at-large representative on the NOCC and it's his duty to represent a number of cities. Edina is one of those cities. And so with that, I've told Chad that they have 10 minutes of presentation and 10 minutes of Q and A, you know, however much that works for you, but go ahead, Chad.
Mr. Leckvie, nice to see you again. Mr. Bergman, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to come and address you tonight on topics related to Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport and specifically three main areas that I'd like to touch on this evening as part of my presentation, as was previously mentioned. To talk a little bit about the Noise Oversight Committee's recent discussions with regard to a request by the city of Edina for membership on that committee. Also want to provide a little background on informational resources that are available to the general public that relate to noise concerns or information for Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport, as well as talk about some recent updates as it relates to the RNAV implementation discussion at Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport that I think will be of interest to the council and the citizens of Edina. Real quickly, by way of background, the Noise Oversight Committee is a 12-member committee that advises the MAC Planning Development and Environment Committee on airport noise-related topics. The committee is comprised of 12 members, six of which are airport user representatives, typically airline representatives, and six of which are community representatives. And there are five communities that have a seat on the Noise Oversight Committee and then there are six communities that we refer to as our at-large communities that share a seat, rounding out the sixth community seat on the committee. At the January 16th Noise Oversight Committee meeting, the committee did take up the question of the city of Edina's request for participation on the committee and at that meeting directed MAC staff to go back and draft bylaw modifications to incorporate the city of Edina as an at-large representative on the Noise Oversight Committee. The plan is we'll be going back at the March 20th meeting of that committee to present them with the bylaw modifications in response to the city's request for their consideration and approval. One thing I wanted to point out, the last bullet point on the slide here, we do have a webpage that's dedicated to the, or to information surrounding the operation of the Noise Oversight Committee and I've provided that link here on the slide. So now, moving on, I had mentioned that I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the informational resources that we have available out there to the general public and what I've done here is summarized or bullet-pointed, if you will, some of the different areas that we focus on in trying to share information with the general public. One I've already talked about is the Noise Oversight Committee. We have a website, a newsletter that we publish, we have quarterly public input meetings, we have a dedicated noise complaint information hotline and we also do briefings like this on a fairly regular basis and we also do publish extensive operational noise reports on a monthly basis. I'd like to focus in real quickly on the second, third, and fourth bullet point there and provide a little bit more detailed information. And start out by doing a little more specific review of our website and that website is www.maccnoise.com and this is the front page, if you will, of that website. This has really been a culmination of many years of work by staff at the MAC in trying to develop a resource that's available on the internet for residents to get information that they care about as it relates to aircraft operations, living in close proximity to a major international airport. And so this website is the result of a culmination of years of those types of efforts and trying to take kind of a virtual noise office to the web and make it available to the general public and this is the face of that website. One of the things that I wanted to point out specifically that I think is a very important feature on the site is the ability to subscribe to email distribution lists and/or RSS data feeds where you can receive information via push notification every time we provide an update to our latest news section on the website or publish the noise newsletter, that type of information. If you signed up to receive this information, you'll receive an automated email that that information is available. And we also have a contact us form that's available on the website if individuals would like to submit something that's of particular interest to them. That's a way for my staff to get that information right away, take a look at it and respond back to individuals. One other, one of the other areas on the website that I think is particularly relevant here is the For Our Neighbors webpage. And you can look here, there are a bunch of different topics that are covered on that website, or excuse me, on that web- website, or excuse me, on that webpage. Residents can file a noise complaint, they can get detailed information on the Noise Oversight Committee and its operation. We have information on our public input meetings, our newsletter, and then various other items related to noise at the airport, noise abatement efforts. We have a real estate professionals and home buyers page and other associated information. The newsletter, we publish a quarterly newsletter that right now in printed form is mailed to about 4,200 residents or homes in the metro area. We have about 1,000 individuals that subscribe to this publication on our website. Just to give a real brief summary, the newsletter provides stories on the latest noise-related issues and topics at the airport. We do have a section in that newsletter that we dedicate to updates on Noise Oversight Committee activities. We have an Ask the Expert section, updates on our public input meetings, and one of the things that has ran fairly regularly in the newsletter over the past number of years has been information on the performance-based navigation and RNAV topics at MSP. In our quarterly public input meetings, there are four input meetings that we hold every year. They're held the fourth Tuesday of the first month of each quarter, and this is an opportunity for MAC staff to interface with the general public. Whoever would like to attend the meeting, and the intent here is to provide staff with the ability to provide a presentation to the general public on recent trends at the airport, operationally or noise-related, any other topics that might be of interest to the general public, we provide an update at those meetings. And then we also try to respond to questions or comments at the meeting. The one thing that we commit to is that anyone who takes the time to attend those meetings and ask any questions or comments at those meetings, they will get a written response from MAC staff. Even if their question is addressed at the meeting, we still send a response letter to anyone who comments at those meetings. The other thing that we do is we view this as an opportunity to provide a conduit between concerns and questions that exist out in the community to the processes that we have in place, like the Noise Oversight Committee and the MAC PDNE Committee. So what we do is we provide a memo that summarizes the input and those discussions that we have at those input meetings and provide those to the members of our Noise Oversight Committee and the MAC Commissioners on the Planning Development and Environment Committee. All the comments and questions that we have received over the years at these meetings are available on our website in addition to the responses to those comments. If you just go to www.macnoise.com and go to the public input meeting section of the website, you can get that information. And then to close out my presentation, I just, Mr. Mayor, wanted to provide a quick update with regard to some recent discussions related to the RNAV issue at Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport. On February 1st, MAC Executive Director and CEO Jeff Hamel sent a letter, per the request of the FAA, outlining a framework, if you would, for the FAA's consideration if they decide to come back and move forward with an initiative to implement RNAV departure procedures further at Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport. And there were really five areas that were addressed by this letter, and this letter is available on our website. Matter of fact, it's the top news item on our latest news section of the website, so if you actually want to get a copy of the letter, it's available there in a PDF form. But the five elements were timing, the significance of local FAA leadership as a critical component in the process, the concept of holistic outreach, the importance of early coordination with local community leaders, and adequate resource allocation. Again, these are recommendations to the FAA, who is the agency in charge of these type of initiatives at U.S. airports. Real quickly, specifically with regard to timing, the framework outlines that, or recommends that, the FAA right now focus on the partial implementation of the procedures that was supported by the Metropolitan Airports Commission last November. The partial implementation, as you know, Mayor, and council members, excludes RNAV departure procedures off Runways 30 left and right, which are those procedures that were being considered to the northwest of the airport. Those were not included in the partial implementation and what was recommended to the FAA from the MAC. The second point, local FAA leadership is a critical component. We are very lucky here at Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport to have a very, very great local FAA staff in the control tower. They are people that are very engaged in the discussions with the communities and have a long history of attending meetings and have gained a great insight, I think, into the concerns that communities have around the airport. We view them as a very important resource for the FAA as part of these types of initiatives on a local level. So one of the things that was laid out in the framework is that it was recommended that these FAA personnel have a critical role in this process in helping to determine how resources from the FAA's perspective could be targeted towards having a real good impact on what local expectations are for information and outreach. Holistic outreach. This is talking about specifically when the FAA comes back to approach the topic of implementation of the departure procedures to the northwest of the airport, which in the timing piece, I should rewind a minute here. The timing piece recommends that if the FAA is going to come back to pursue RNAV departure procedure implementation in the northwest, that that should occur about a year after implementation of the partial, so July of 2015, because right now, the partial implementation is being considered by the FAA to be completed in September of 2014. So holistic outreach, when the FAA were to come back, if they were to come back to take a look at implementation of the departure procedures to the northwest of the airport, it's recommended that the FAA not only reach out to the communities to the northwest of the airport to possibly take a look at the implementation of procedures there, but also go to the other communities around the airport where the partial implementation has occurred to see how it's working, what the impacts are, if there's any way to modify those procedures to reduce impact, if there is any. Early coordination with local community leaders, this is an important point in the framework in that what is recommended here is that an important part of an effective program would begin with outreach to key community leaders in the communities around the airport that would be impacted by the future implementation of the procedures to get ideas and input on what specific elements on outreach programs should include and the types of information that would be expected in that program for that effort to be effective. And this is a very important point, I think, overall in the framework. And then, of course, adequate resource allocation. This is making sure that, moving forward, if this effort is undertaken by the FAA, to make sure that when a specific plan is put together, that the resources are dedicated such, whether it's FAA staffing and/or consultant work, to make sure that the resources are there to adequately address those needs and expectations from the community's perspective. And as I said, Mr. Mayor, this letter is available as well on our website if anybody would like to download it. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Member Swenson.
Going back to the beginning, you talked about the seats on NOC and that five communities have a seat, permanent seat. Could you give me those five communities, please?
Yes, Minneapolis, Richfield, Eagan, Mendota Heights, and Bloomington.
Okay, and do all of those communities touch the airport, or are some of them across the river from the airport?
Yes. Mr. Chair, council member, those communities are within or touched by a specific noise contour at the airport, which we refer to as the 65 DNL noise contour. So there are communities that are closer into the airport, subjected to typically a higher noise level.
Okay, so planes are going over Bloomington, so they have a seat on it?
Yes, at a certain noise level. Bloomington is at a proximity to the airport such that the noise levels in the community support the full membership.
I know you have some permanent monitors. I also know that you have the ability, you have a mobile noise monitor. Are any of your permanent monitors at a distance from the airport in Edina?
We do not have any permanent noise monitors located at that distance in the city of Edina.
Okay. Do I assume that you've monitored noise to date in Edina yet, or is that something you're planning on doing?
We do not, we have not monitored noise in Edina, per se, and we don't have any permanent noise monitors located in Edina. The way that the noise contours that we're discussing here are developed are using, it's using a computer model referred to as the integrated noise model, which is what we're required to use from the FAA's perspective.
Okay, so even though we have planes going over Edina now, you couldn't monitor what those planes give in noise?
No, I mean, we could monitor them.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay, that was, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Member Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you reviewing the public outreach information. My question is, at the beginning of the RNAV discussions, why was there a process to reach out through a staff level to notify about the impending issue? Because obviously, for a community like Edina that has not had the type of concentrations being proposed in the RNAV, it would be important for us to not only have the general information on your website that someone may or may not look at, but to have our own staff and leadership advise, so we can reach out to our community. So I'm just curious about what the process and the thinking was behind that.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, council member, the process that unfolded with regard to the discussions that kind of reached a climax in November timeframe is something that, as I mentioned previously in my slides, really has origins back in 2007. And a lot of those discussions were taking place at the Noise Oversight Committee over time, taking a look at, really, early on, focusing on just a few procedures at the airport that were existing noise abatement procedures that were over unpopulated areas and what I'll call kind of like low-hanging fruit type of initiatives. What ended up happening was, as we got deeper into pursuing those smaller procedures, the FAA took a look at it and said, hey, this is an opportunity for an airspace-wide design and implementation effort. And that was in about the 2010 timeframe. And FAA kind of took over the initiative at that point. What the Noise Oversight Committee did in early 2011 was put together a letter of five criteria that they wanted to have the FAA's process address, and it included things like a detailed noise contour analysis, it included a public outreach program, it included trying to minimize the overflight of sensitive land uses around the airport. There were a couple other points that were included in the criteria. There was, as part of the process, the FAA was scheduling publication of these procedures on a certain timetable. And that timetable, when you take a look at when the MAC got the flight track, or the final flight tracks from the FAA, and the schedule that the FAA had slotted these procedures for publication and implementation, had started to compress at the end of the process. We got the tracks from the FAA many months after when we were initially supposed to get them, to allow for the public information program. In essence, what ended up happening was you had a public information program that unfolded in about a month and a half that was initially planned by the Noise Oversight Committee to take four to six months at a minimum to complete. So it was a process that was, I would say, challenged right out of the gate by virtue of some pretty tough scheduling and timing criteria that was laid down in the process by virtue of the FAA's scheduling that they used to implement the procedures. So what ended up happening was, at the Noise Oversight Committee, was staff was given direction to implement a public information program in September, mid to late September. And immediately after that, there was articles that were run in the newspapers, there was some news that was carried by local news channels. We had two public open houses, we had hundreds of people show up to that public, to those public open houses. You know, the end result was quite a few frustrated residents at that November 19th MAC Commission meeting. And I would have to say, as you probably all well know, the predominant concern was this is moving way, you know, this is moving pretty fast. I think if I had to look back and say, did the process work in that people found out about it? Yes, it did. Was it messy? Absolutely. Could it have been better? Absolutely, it could be. And that's part of the reason for this letter and this framework to the FAA, to kind of lay that out. So I mean, as MAC staff, we tried to do the best job that we could in a month, month and a half, to get the news and get the information out there, realizing that there was no way that we could possibly see everybody that might be interested in this. I mean...
My question was more about staff level and the public. I understand it's difficult to, you've got hundreds of thousands of constituents that you're dealing with, with the RNAV, but a simple phone call or outreach to cities that are affected on a staff level can then allow those cities to reach out to their residents to get the information. Actually, it's helpful to your procedure, doesn't work against it, it works with it. And I don't feel like that happened, because the article in the paper is really what informed us, not one of our staff coming up and saying, hey, there are some new procedures that may be implemented that are going to gravely affect our residents, we need to get the word out. So from our perspective, as a leadership team, I think it will be important going forward that there's staff-level outreach earlier. That's a faster mechanism for you, anyway, to just reach out to somebody in the cities that may be affected and say, hey, we need you to help us get the word out, you know, so we can have more effective public process.
You know, we don't have anyone on MAC and we have no one on NOC. We haven't, you know, well, the person on MAC didn't come to us, so I guess we do have a person who represents us on MAC, but we have no one on NOC. So I think what we're trying to have you hear is that we really need you to reach out to our city staff so that we can be connected.
Absolutely.
Member Rendell.
Thank you. You know, for people who are hearing about RNAV for the first time, would you please define it so that they understand what we're talking about?
Yes, Mr. Chair and council member, RNAV is an acronym for something called area navigation. And in simple terms, what that refers to is a way for aircraft to navigate such that they use more sophisticated instrumentation onboard the aircraft to fly a path in the air, if you will, using navigation input feeds from either the satellite, from either satellites or ground-based navades to produce a track in the sky.
Okay, and this style of navigation is in place in other markets around the country?
Mr. Mayor, council member, yes, it is.
Okay. I don't know if anyone can know the answer to this question, but how many airports are there in the United States that are situated the way ours is in the midst of residential communities?
I mean, there's a handful of them out there. I would say that, you know, MSP is a little unique in terms of some of the proximity to the northwest of the airport, but it definitely, MSP, no doubt, if you take a look at other airports around the country, has a very active noise discussion that's been taking place for decades around the airport, so there's no question about that.
I was talking about this with somebody recently, and where RNAV takes, and in my understanding, in very lay language, it concentrates flight paths over a concentrated area, basically. Where it might have fanned before, they're more concentrated now, so you had six flight paths that might now be joined over one. But the reality is that even that, with RNAV, they're starting to fan out as well, are they not? It isn't all over one pathway. While the picture in the Star Tribune made it look like it was one pathway, and that started the panic, and as well it should, it got our attention, but in reality, what can we expect if RNAV is eventually implemented here? Is it really one pathway, or is it going to continue to fan out?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, council member, you would have multiple paths. You know, you would, if you take a look at the operation today at the airport, there are primary headings that are used off each runway, and each one of those primary headings has a wide band of tracks, okay, that are flying that heading, because the pilots are given instructions on when to turn, and then the pilot executes the turn, and then you may have winds aloft that are blowing the aircraft, all of which introduces variability in terms of where that aircraft ends up over the ground. What RNAV does for each one of those headings is tightens that by using the onboard instrumentation onboard the aircraft with the navigation input, like I mentioned, from a satellite or from a ground-based nav aid. And so that'll tighten that width of tracks on a given heading, but you still have multiple headings off each one of the runways that have, that would have a procedure designed for them to be used.
So conceivably, every aircraft isn't going to go exactly in the same spot?
Yeah, off every, I mean, not every aircraft off a given runway is going to go on a track on a given spot. There would be different tracks used per runway.
I think, going off of Member Swanson's question, and I'm assuming that we're going to hear from Mr. Bergman, but what cities are represented in the at-large seat?
Right now, it is St. Paul, Inver Grove Heights, Sunfish Lake, Apple Valley, Burnsville, and St. Louis Park.
Okay, and we're adding Edina to that.
That is the recommendation right now. That's before the Noise Oversight Committee.
Okay, so that one individual is responsible, then, to understand all the concerns of all the cities that he represents?
Mr. Mayor, council member, yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, I'll be interested to find out how that happens.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. Mr. Lechve, as I understand it, and I was at, I was at the House Transportation Policy Hearing that was held about a month ago and at which Mr. Hamel spoke, I understand that RNAV is actually a navigation method. As you pointed out, satellite-based rather than the manual method that we have today. But that the tracks are actually a separate issue, and that you can have one without the other. You can have RNAV, which is touted as having benefits for fuel savings. I think safety is something else that, that also gets mentioned, although we don't have a history, we have no, I think, crashes at this airport in my lifetime. And so the benefits of RNAV again can be attained without concentrating these tracks into the pattern that was in the paper in November. And that, Mr. Hamel did speak to at the airport, residents also spoke to it at the airport. Am I missing something?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, typically when you implement an RNAV procedure off a given runway, you are going to have aircraft that are going to fly that procedure, and typically you'll end up with some concentration. Now, where the discussion may have been going is that maybe, if there is future discussion with the FAA and there is a, a process like this followed, that maybe there might be the opportunity to add more tracks, to try to, to try to spread them out a little bit, or address some of the community concerns from a procedure design perspective. That may have been some of the line.
Well, actually, I was also present at the MAC hearing in November, and what I heard at that hearing was the FAA representative asked whether or not RNAV has been implemented in full, this condensation in the tracks, at any airport in the country. And his answer was no, that had not been fully implemented, which was fairly revelatory, given what had appeared in the paper before that. So I appreciate my colleagues' questions, and I do think that we have an airport that is more surrounded by residential than a lot in the country. But I do understand that there are also airports that have some significant residential presence nearby, and that they are struggling with this issue as well. I believe at the House of Representatives, I heard that Atlanta is looking at multiple tracks. I think it's John Wayne or some airport in Southern California, it might be Orange County that's also looking at multiple tracks. I think there are issues with Seattle. So again, it's my understanding that you can have some implementation of RNAV without necessarily the condensation into the few number of tracks that was being recommended and discussed this past fall.
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I think maybe too, one of the points that you might be touching on is this question of, can you do partial implementation? Which, which in this case here at MSP would mean doing operations the way we do them today to the northwest of the airport, not changing and not implementing RNAV at this point, but doing RNAV on all the other runways off, off the airport. And is that possible? And that's one of the things that the FAA is evaluating right now.
Well, and I do understand that that was the MAC's vote in November. But again, I also understand from the FAA reps' testimony at that hearing at the MAC in November, and I also understand from the testimony or discussion at the House of Representatives in January that they are two separate things, and that you can have an implementation of RNAV, the method of navigation, that does not involve the condensation it attracts. And maybe we'll have this conversation going forward, but I'm a pretty good note taker. And I tend to, and I, I use terminology I think that's simpler than you're using this evening, but I, I think I'm fairly clear on the concept, and I do understand that this is also something that's being debated or worked on with other airports around the country. And in fact, we're not an outlier in being concerned about the impact of condensing something into tracks. I want to follow up on something you just said, and with the partial implementation that was voted on at the MAC in, in November, it's my understanding that flight patterns that exist currently over this community, some of which have raised concern over, about increased noise in different corridors, that in fact, those flight patterns will remain in place. So anybody who's feeling that after the MAC decision in November, the residents of Edina are somehow getting a break by not having airplanes fly over their community, that is not in fact the case, am I correct?
Yeah, they will remain, right now, the partial implementation advocates that departure operations over this area remain the same.
Okay, then, if there is no permanent measurement of noise in this community, and I live in the northeast area, I am under a, an arrival pattern. And I know that the nearest measurement of noise that some of my neighbors have called and emailed you about, I have not. But that is, I believe, at 40th and New York. And so France in, what, about maybe 10 blocks from where the planes are flying over. So without a permanent measure of noise in the community, and with those flight patterns still continuing, how is it that you propose to measure a baseline in order to project or measure or give people information on what the impact will be of some of the changes that you are proposing?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I would offer the approach that was used, you know, in the context of the last discussion, focused on, as I had mentioned previously, the integrated noise model, in, in developing noise contours in a manner that's consistent with the process that, that we as airports are, are given by the Federal Aviation Administration for quantifying noise related to any proposed action. What I would offer to you is, in the future, moving forward, if the FAA does come back to take a look at doing something to the northwest of Minneapolis-St. Paul National Airport, off runways 30 left and 30 right, that that is part of, part of what should be flushed out of the framework that you see right here. And I'll, I'll point specifically to the fourth bullet point here, in the coordination with local community leaders, and, and making sure that the evaluation and analysis that is done is responsive to the expectations and the concerns that exist out in the community. And, and so I'm speaking in support of exactly what you're saying, I think, and that is that if a process like this is to ever be successful at the airport, I, I believe that one of the things that will have to happen is that there will need to be this early coordination and an early understanding and agreement between all the parties as to what the appropriate way and methodology will be for trying to understand, engage with the impact will be in addressing, you know, the concerns that might be out there.
I think it's also this question of local conditions that my colleagues have raised is, is particularly important. I understand that some of the communities that also are being impacted, will be impacted, have had decades in which to plan for this, and in some instances have zoned property, commercial and industrial, and that the, some of the proposed condensation of tracks goes over that property. In this community, we have residential property that's built right down to the freeways. And it's not possible to route a compressed track or a condensation of tracks over property that's not occupied by residences within some fairly short distance. I hope that's borne in mind. And finally, it's my understanding that in terms of the MAC districts, they are twice as large as the MAC Council districts. Am I correct?
Approximately, I believe that to be.
Okay, and I do, I am grateful for your presence here tonight and for Councilmember Bergman's as well. It is the first time I've ever seen anybody from the MAC, the NOC, or any connection with the airport here at City Hall, including our representative, and it is my understanding that our representative on the MAC did make some presentation to some of the other cities in her district, which were going to be impacted by this. So I think it is important both to recognize that whatever avenues of communication were supposed to exist in the past, in fact, did not work. And to confirm with my colleagues that it's my hope that lines of communication will work better going forward.
Absolutely.
Member Sprague.
I just have a follow-up question when we were talking about the technology. So RNAV allows the flight track to be more accurate, so there's less variability within that given departure track, correct? So it, we're trying to, to, to take out the unintentional variability in the flight pattern. So contra-wise with RNAV, you could also build in intentional variability within that's, which is what, okay, so, so you could build a backend, yes, we have a more accurate flight pattern, but we're not going to route everyone directly down, down this line, we'll have, we'll have, you know, offset a few, so it's more of a fan within that track.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I believe that to be part of the line of discussion that was.
That's, I just wanted to get that more in layperson's term. And then the second thing is, what will be the follow-up, again, on a staff level, on a city level, to the FAA's response to this letter that went out?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I mean, one of the things that we would do, of course, is we use our website, get that information out there. I mean, we have Mr. Neal now is getting the newsletters on the website, I'll make sure that, that he's aware of, of any information that comes with regard to this topic, and I'm sure the city will be active participants now, hopefully, at NOC meetings and attending those meetings. All those, that information would be provided as part of those processes, and we'll make sure that that communication takes place. Thank you.
Member Swanson.
One follow-up to Member Bennett's, just to be more helpful. What I heard the most from our residents when we went through this very truncated discussion with you guys was, you know, there was this decibel sound that is what they would hear. But since they don't really know what they hear now, there is no way for them to compare it. So going forward, as we look at modeling or whatever it is, they still need to know, what are they hearing today when a plane flies over their house? So they know that number, and then they can compare it to what the modeling says they would hear if there was even a fan track going around. So if that can happen in, in modeling and in taking, in monitoring noise, that would be really helpful.
Would the FAA do that modeling, since this is really their jurisdiction, or would, would the MAC be doing it for them?
Mayor, the FAA would be doing that modeling.
Okay, and, and we know from the hearing that we attended in November that they haven't done any of that in modeling yet.
Well, they, they have done.
Well, they didn't modeling on, on the, on the noise decibels or the...
Yeah, they, they did do some modeling. It was different than the noise contour runs that the, that the Noise Oversight Committee had requested. So the Metropolitan Airports Commission did run those contours just to support the Noise Oversight Committee's efforts in that regard.
Sure.
But, you know, moving forward, you know, as I said previously, this is an FAA program and project, and they would be the lead agency on, on issues related to that.
All right, but in terms of, and I think the person answered the question this way, in terms of finishing their environmental impact work, in terms of looking at the noise decibels in Edina, or the, the effect of a frequency of, of movement of planes every three to five minutes down a certain track, they haven't done any of that yet, haven't done any of that yet.
Over Edina?
Over Edina.
My understanding is that they did what's called a noise screen. And I don't think it gets to the level of specificity, Mr. Mayor, that, that you're talking about specifically. They're going back now and redoing their work on the environmental side, removing the procedures to the northwest and taking a look at the partial implementation, taking a look at, at the analysis with respect to that. But again, I'll point to the, to the fourth bullet point here and say that, you know, this is one of the things we're advocating for, is that if these discussions do unfold in the future, and there's an initiative to move forward with this to the northwest, that these are the type of early coordination efforts that need to take place, and defining exactly what, what the expectation is.
I would, I would compliment you, incidentally, from a staff level standpoint, on being very reactive to the concerns that we had that arose at the 11th hour, and, and not only you, but Jeff Hamel and, and all of the members of, of the MAC. I think it was unprecedented, really, that they voted the way they did to have a partial implementation of RNAV on a north-south runway, but on 30 left and 30 right, they decided to maintain the status quo. And, and I think what, what you've heard from people in Edina, and what we hear from folks in Edina, is they appreciate the convenience of living close to the airport. They understand there's going to be some, some noise associated with that. But the idea of condensing flights on two tracks, out over Edina, one down to Crosstown, one over the core of Edina, and increasing those flights over the core of Edina by 150%, not understanding what a track meant, it was very disconcerting. And so i- if we, as we go forward, can work on creating a more diffuse sort of pattern like exists now, but use that RNAV technology, I think we all recognize that there's going to be a next generation of technology that's going to be necessary to maintain safety and efficiency in this air traffic system all over the United States. And when the guy from the FAA says he wants to create a interstate highway system in the skies, all I could think of was that when they did it on the ground, every time they came to a metropolitan area, there were different characteristics for that metropolitan area, and they needed to, they needed to adjust accordingly. And as, as my colleagues have pointed out, and as you well know, from all your experience with noise mitigation, we're right up, the airport's right up against our community, and there's a, there, there's, it's a bittersweet sort of thing. And so as we move forward on this, I think the people in Edina will tell us, you, yeah, go ahead, use RNAV, if they're interested in safety and efficiency, and this is the next generation of, of technology that's going to be used, but use it the right way, create multiple tracks going out, and also look at a close-in departure technique where they climb out a little bit quicker than they, than they, than they do now, like they used to do before 1997. I think, and that's being done around, around the world and in certain parts of our country. So those are some things that I just wanted to, to follow up with you on. I'm really pleased that Director Hamel sent that letter to the FAA on February 1st. When, when you talk about early coordination with local community leaders, I would, I would say that you need to think about it more than just leadership, you need to think about the community as a whole. And when you're talking about holistic outreach, make sure there isn't a distinction between outreach and input, because you're going to want to have that community input too. And, and I feel like our city has really grown in that way over time, so that we really get a lot of community input on things before we make, make decisions. And I'm, I'm hoping that works that same way as we go through this process. Finally, when we were at the state legislature testifying, Director Hamel told me that he had been to Washington to meet with the FAA on this problem, had about a half hour scheduled to talk about it, and spent an hour and a half, and I, I know it was for our benefit that that conversation took place. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about the substance of that conversation. I don't know whether you know anything that you, you can share with us, or I see Tom Anderson, the General Counsel, who lives in Edina, for the, he's a General Counsel for the MAC sitting back, so I don't know if either of you know anything that you'd want to share with us on that, or we can get it directly from Mr. Hamel.
Yeah, I, the only thing that I know is that the, the letter was something, the, the February 1st letter was something that followed that discussion. And so I think that there was a willingness or a desire on the behalf of the FAA after that discussion to gain some, some good insight on a, on a viable framework that they could at least start to, to consider if they were going to move forward successfully with the RNAV departure procedure implementation on 30 left and right.
You know, after that vote on November 19th, where you decided, or the MAC decided not to recommend to the FAA that RNAV be implemented on 30 left and 30 right on flights heading northwest, we got a lot of calls from people that were very pleased. I also received some, at least one call from the East Coast, from people saying, how did, how did that happen? How did you get the FAA to back off on something that they were determined to implement? And all I can say is it was in large part due to the people in Edina, the people in southwest Minneapolis, but I also credit you and other staff members, local FAA people, that I think were sensitive to the fact that Edina didn't get the kind of due process, the kind of fair shake that they should have gotten. And now we got time to look at this and try to figure out a solution that'll work for a, an airport located in a, in tight quarters in a large metropolitan community, and use that model other places. So this, I see there's a real silver lining here, and I hope we all take advantage of it, and I hope the FAA will listen to their local officials here. Because I found them to be very sensitive to this, to this issue, and wanting to work with people to find a solution that worked.
Yep. Mayor, I really, really appreciate your comments. I, I think, you know, I touched on it a little bit previously in the discussion, in that, you know, obviously, as a person who, who's involved in the noise discussion at the airport, I, I would have loved to have that discussion at the November 19th Commission Meeting be a lot different. But the one thing that, that I, that I did feel good about is that I know there were a lot of frustrated people there that lived northwest of the airport. But at the end of the day, I think their voice was heard. And like I said, it was not a, a perfect process by any stretch of the imagination, and, and the process was really put under some serious constraints with regard to scheduling and timing, and, but I really appreciate your comments.
Mr. Bergman, Councilmember Bergman, any comment? You, you've come over to the new city you represent. It's, frankly, I feel like you're in an awkward spot. You've got a lot of different communities with a lot of different interests, and you're, you're going to try to make sure you represent everyone well. So welcome to Edina.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers, and, and Mr. Neal, thanks for having us. Just a little brief history about myself, I'm John Bergman, Councilmember for the city of Apple Valley. I've been elected now on my 11th year, I spent three years before being a Councilmember on the Planning Commission. Like you folks at, in this city, Apple Valley was the last city to be added to the NOC. When this situation... was the last city to be added to the NOC. When this situation arose, I felt it was my duty as the at-large rep to bring Edina into what Apple Valley got blessed with, and that being part of NOC. The process for us, I think, or for you, is going a little smoother because of the fact that I knew what you folks were going through, our city was going through. I will say this, and I heard councilmembers talk about you would like stuff in layman's language, and that's how I operate. I will say to you, and you wonder how I do this, Mr. Neal was given an assignment, and he will probably tell you, yes, he did do it. I said to Mr. Neal, just so all you folks would be comfortable, is, "Mr. Neal, do your homework and contact the other city administrators or managers or their councils and see what kind of representation has been given to the at-large cities." And my understanding that has taken place. I take pride in the fact that your city will be, it will be smooth as silk as far as representation. I pride myself in for your city to know that you will have the best of the best information. You will have Carl Rydean and his staff here. If you would like to have a meeting at an informal setting and hear what RNAV is about, you will have Chad and his group here. That's what I'm about. The cities I represent, some cities have airport committees. I've actually gone to those committees and listened to them. There's other cities that I don't represent, the Egans and the Mendota Heights. I've gone and sat in, so I know what their cities are all about. Minneapolis has an airport, wants to have an airport. Community, their residents have come to me. I say this, if you folks would like a tour of the tower to know what air traffic control is about, that can be arranged. I know in the next month, Inver Grove Heights is going on their second tour of the tower, because they have new airport commission people. So those avenues for you folks are there at any time you want it. You just name the time and the place, and we'll get it to happen for you. A resident asked me recently from Edina, "How does Edina have a voice when I represent your city at, for the current time, I represent your city?" I said to the resident of Edina, I said, "Whoever the spokesperson is for Edina," that being either a councilmember, mayor, or Mr. Neal, or some staff member, "They will sit at the table that I sit at and voice, you will voice your concerns. Your voice will be heard, not mine. I will back it, support it, do whatever I have to do, but your voice will always be heard." Somebody stated to me that what happens if I represent Apple Valley, and Apple Valley likes something that Edina doesn't like. I stated to them, "Then we, as the communities at large, will vote on that, and that's what the vote will be. If the vote is in favor of what Edina wants, that's what will be recommended before the full NOC committee." So your voice will be heard by you as individuals, not by me. And I pride myself in that. As far as information being given in some of these things that you heard about, how this process took place for the FAA, don't be hard on the local FAA. It was a national FAA. Mr. Roberts, as you all were aware of, he gave a presentation to the NOC committee that we thought was really spectacular, and he did an elegant job. When he got before the full MAC commission, he folded and didn't do a very good job at all. And we were disappointed. We, as a committee, as a NOC committee, gave a strong recommendation, and Egan was the first one, seconded by Mendota Heights, that what was supposed to be presented to the communities was strictly a strong support by FAA. They were the forerunners to go out to the communities and give their presentation. Yes, did Chad and his group get involved? Yes, because they were kind of put into the spot where FAA came and said, "Hey, we need your support." But we asked fully that the FAA give all these presentations. And so the national, we believe, was the ones that faltered. Carl Rydean and his staff folks, once you meet this individual, I think you'll find he will work to the nth degree to try to make everything work for your community. And I can't say that loud enough. As far as Mr. Hammel and his comments in regards to meeting with FAA, it was because of us, some of us, that were disappointed in the process as far as what the FAA nationally did. And so with that, we asked Mr. Hammel to work a little more in different avenues than what has been done currently with the FAA. And so some of those things are taking place today. So I'll answer any questions you have, but your voice will be heard. I look forward to supporting it in the way I've heard is a unanimous vote for your city being added to NOC, so I welcome you.
Thank you.
I'll take your questions.
Councilmember Bergman, Member Brindle.
I would like some clarification on part of the process that you mentioned. And that is that the at-large cities that you represent, did I understand correctly that you take a vote of those at-large cities, and then you take that decision forward to the NOC?
Generally speaking, yes. We have not had to take a vote where every city that I, that Apple Valley represents, excuse me, Apple Valley represents, we do, they get the same packet we do. And so they have never come to me, excuse me, they've never come to me and stated that we've had a concern. It's always been a unanimous decision. When I've had to vote on something, it's been unanimous, because I've not heard from any other city. But in your case, if there was an issue that came about, it would be discussed either by email or by conference call with the other communities that Apple Valley represents, and your voice would be heard. But you would also get that, for example, at the March 20th meeting, if there was an issue that you wanted, and I've heard a couple suggestions tonight that you, as councilmembers, kind of would like to see, and I might kind of like to agree with you on a couple of the things that we look at. If you have ideas, then present it. And that's the way the process works.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Bergman? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For coming tonight. And for both of you and others at the MAC, I would say that this is probably one of the more important issues that Edina has faced in its recent history. So we want to go cautiously, and we want to work with the local FAA. We want to find a solution here that works, that creates greater safety, greater efficiency, but doesn't forget about looking through the lens of humanity that's living down below and enjoying a certain quality of life as we try to figure out a solution for how to disperse airplane traffic out of MSP. So let's all keep that in mind as we go forward. All right. And Mr. Anderson, thanks for coming over this evening. Appreciate you being here. You're only a few blocks from home. So, thank you. Thanks again. All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two public hearing matters before us this evening. First one is the potential distribution of community development block grant money for 2013. And Joyce Repia has this matter for us with some recommendations from staff.
We do this once a year. Mayor Hovland and members of the council, the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program is a federally funded program administered by HUD, who in turn charges Hennepin County to oversee the distribution of funds to its communities. These funds are to be directed toward improving housing opportunities and providing a suitable living environment for persons with low and moderate incomes. Projects which may be funded with the CDBG monies are either public service or community development-related. Edina's 2013 allotment, for planning purposes, is $110,285, the final budget that was approved in 2012. Once HUD establishes the 2013 budget later this spring, we will be notified of any changes to the allotment. And if a change does occur, the accompanying resolution provides for the budget to be readjusted without coming back before you. As in years past, HUD requires that funding for public service agencies not exceed 15% of the budget, which means $16,543 is available to assist the following agencies. Senior Community Services Home Program, or Housing and Outdoor Maintenance for the Elderly, provides housekeeping and chore services and outside maintenance assistance to Edina seniors who pay for services on a sliding fee scale. In 2012, 73 Edina residents benefited from 760 jobs totaling 2,237 hours. In 2013, Senior Community Services projects a 10% increase in activity and a distribution of $9,618 is proposed. A $4,700 distribution is proposed for Community Action Partnership for Suburban Hennepin, or CAPSH, which provides full-service, full-cycle housing programs to include foreclosure prevention, homebuyer education, homebuyer counseling, reverse mortgage counseling, and housing rehabilitation and maintenance assistance. In 2012, 31 Edina residents benefited from foreclosure prevention assistance. And looking forward to 2013, an increased emphasis with the homebuyer education program is projected. Lastly, a distribution of $2,225 is proposed for HomeLine, which provides tenant advocacy services for Edina renters facing critical housing situations with landlords in foreclosure, as well as situations that threaten their housing security. In 2012, 96 Edina renters called HomeLine's Tenant Hotline, where they receive free legal advice. HomeLine also assisted in preventing the eviction of six renters and saved Edina residents an estimated $12,275. These public service agencies provide quality programs for Edina residents. And while Edina's CDBG budget has decreased 40% since 2010, they have all maintained or increased their outreach in our community during that period. Moving on to the community development portion of the budget, which consists of the remaining 85%, or $93,742 of the budget, $41,491 of these funds are proposed to be directed to the ongoing Rehabilitation of Private Property program, which provides deferred repayment loans of up to $30,000 to make structural improvements to owner-occupied, single-family homes. Eligibility for the program is based on a household income schedule established by HUD for the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. The income limits may not exceed 80% of the median household income, which in 2013 would be $64,400 for a four-person household. Hennepin County facilitates this program and reports that there are currently five households receiving rehabilitation assistance and three households on a waiting list. We anticipate that the program will continue to attract income-eligible homeowners interested in improving and maintaining their homes. The remaining $52,251 of the community development funds is proposed to go toward West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, or WALT, for their Homes Within Reach Community Land Trust program, which will assist them to purchase a ninth land trust home in Edina, reinforcing Edina's commitment to providing affordable housing opportunities. The Community Land Trust model removes the market value of the land from the mortgage equation, thus reducing the cost of a home for a workforce family by approximately 35% to 42%, making it more affordable than houses on the open real estate market. WALT owns the land, and the homeowner owns the home. A ground lease signed by both parties defines and secures the roles and responsibilities of both WALT and the homeowner, including, but not limited to, a resale recapture provision and long-term rights and use of the land. Over the past year, we've really made a concerted effort to advertise these programs on our city's website, in the About Town magazine, and on our Channel 16 programs as well. There are representatives from the requesting agencies here this evening that are happy to answer any questions you may have, and I, too, would be happy to address any questions.
All right. Thanks. Questions for Joyce? Anyone? Member Brindle?
Okay, so 15% of the city's budget caps the funding at $110,285?
15% toward public services.
Toward public services?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. I just wanted to be sure that I understood that correctly. I see it up in this paragraph.
That's what the 16,000...
And then I see the 110,000.
That's the total allotment that we get.
Right. Right. Public service agencies. Okay. All right. I was reading it as all of them are public service agencies. So, all right. Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Ms. Repia, there, I noted that with respect to the senior community services, that the projected, there's a projection of serving 80 seniors next year. The actual number for 2012 reported is 73, and in 2011 it was 90, looking at requests in past years. Is there, are we tracking why we're actually seeing fewer, are we seeing fewer requests? Are we able to fill fewer requests?
Well, I think what's happening is the senior population is aging, and people are passing on. And so it's just a matter of getting new people into the program. I know Senior Community Services has done a lot with marketing and outreach to make sure that our seniors know about this program, working, too, with our social workers, with our senior center. So we really are trying to get out there and get the word out.
Great. I appreciate that. That was a new paragraph of this year's report. I appreciate that. So if someone were, for instance, just to call the City Hall general number the receptionist, would they be able to get a referral or get a phone number for Senior Community Services so they could be in touch, make their own inquiries?
Member Bennett, yes, they could. They would perhaps be put through to me. Our Edina Resource Center is also a great resource for people, and they do, give them information about Senior Community Services. So there are several avenues out there to find out about them.
Sure. And I was just thinking of, somebody who maybe was new to the community wouldn't know about the Resource Center, but would know City Hall. So they might think of that as their first point of contact. Thank you.
Other questions? Members break.
Do we have providers here that are going to give any testimony today?
Members break, we do.
Okay.
All right. You have a preference on how you want them to appear?
Not particularly. They're all admirable people.
All right.
This is Kitty Engel, and she's with Senior Community Services.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm glad to be here, and I want to thank you for your pass...
Would you give us your name and address, please?
Kitty Engel, and I live in Rosemont, Minnesota. And Ms. Repia's done a great job of describing our program, and I know that you're all familiar with it. I'd like to add only a couple of things. She mentioned that we have a sliding scale for people, and that when they have a low income, they pay a lower rate. We also have wonderful volunteers that help with many tasks, and we do not charge residents when we use volunteers. We also like to use agencies that are in the community, such as churches, schools, companies, scout troops, and individuals that would help us when they volunteer to do raking, window washing, weeding, garage cleaning. And this past year, in 2012, we recruited Edina High School Service Corps, Edina Community Lutheran Church, and Normandale Lutheran Church. They all serve the different elders in their community, in addition to other volunteers. One of the nicest things that we find that happens when youth groups volunteer is building relationships. The seniors get to know the young people, can be pleasant, respectful, and caring. And if I could, I'd like to address, Councilmember Bennett, on your question. One of the things that we're very much affected by in our program is weather. And in 2012, if you remember, it was a pretty dry season... And in two thousand twelve, if you remember, it was a pretty dry season, and we didn't have snow like we do now, and that had a lot of effect on our numbers, I think, as far as that goes. We hope to continue to serve more seniors in Edina, and we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Engel. Any questions for Ms. Engel? Members Bragg?
Yeah, just wondering what the website is for the general public.
The website is Senior Community Services website, and it's www.seniorcommunity.org. And our phone number is nine five two eight 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 five five three zero.
Good, thanks, Ms. Engel.
Thank you.
How about we just take them in sequence, Community Action Partnership, CAPSH?
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, and city council members. My name is Dana Slimmer. I am a resident of Mountsview, Minnesota, but I represent Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin, which is located in St. Louis Park. CAPSH was founded in nineteen eighty-five. We thank you for your support of our longstanding partnership with the City of Edina to provide housing, education, and counseling services for the low-to-moderate-income residents of the city. Sorry, I'm a counselor, not a speaker, so it's a little new to me to be up here. Um, CAPSH is the only HUD-approved counseling agency servicing all of suburban Hennepin County. We have six counselors that work the full-cycle homeownership programs. And last year, I believe the number was mentioned, we served thirty-nine residents of Edina, thirty-one of those in foreclosure prevention, four in homebuyer education, three in reverse mortgage counseling, and one in home repair and maintenance. And we're seeing a strong pull in our homebuyer education and counseling. Um, we've actually trained, we had one part-time staff person doing homebuyer counseling, working with people to improve their credit and income in order to purchase a home, and we've increased that to three part-time counselors. So it seems to be where our, our emphasis is going in the following year, is more to the home purchase side. But we do have counselors trained in all those areas. Uh, CAPSH also provides emergency transitional housing case management, energy assistance, food support application assistance, free legal clinics, tax filing assistance, immigration services, and financial literacy classes. And we look forward to continuing to serve the community of Edina through our programs. Um, our website is CAPSH.org, C-A-P-S-H dot org, and the phone number is nine five two nine three three, whoops, nine. I gave you the wrong number, I'm gonna give you my number. Sorry. Nine three three nine six three nine.
Go ahead and give us your, go ahead and give us your home number too, so people can call you at home.
If you knew how many different phone numbers I had, for each different department, but that is our general number. Any questions regarding our programs?
Hold on, Dean, I think we do have some, Member Brindle?
Well, I actually just want to introduce myself to you because I was appointed last Thursday evening to the CAPSH board.
Welcome.
So I will be looking for information from you on meetings, et cetera. I am aware of the CAPSH board, or of CAPSH, having served on a number of boards where CAPSH has had a seat there. Worked on the Alina Health Community Assessment, and CAPSH was part of that, as well as Edina Community Council, and, and some of the other school-related boards. So I look forward to it, and, but I just did want to introduce myself to you. Thanks.
Nice to meet you. Look forward to getting to know you better.
Thanks.
Members Bragg?
Thank you. In terms of foreclosure prevention, what, what types of activities are you doing?
We are working, we worked one-on-one with clients to help them contact and work with their lenders toward modification, refinances. In some cases where there are no options for retaining the property, we try to help them work through short sale situations, or sometimes foreclosure is their only option, but trying to help them transition out of the property as well, if that is the only option left.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it seemed like the vast majority of the circumstances you faced with Edina residents were foreclosure prevention strategies. So with respect to what you just told, Member Bragg, were you able to work with some of the lenders to modify the payments and keep people in their homes? Did you have some success with that in two thousand twelve?
We do have some success, yeah. We're, we're seeing now, we're, we're getting to the point where a lot of people are to the point where long-term unemployment, there's no income whatsoever, there's not a lot of options. But those that do have the income, you know, can return to making payments, we're seeing, I'd say fifty-fifty, and, which is pretty good. Um, statistically nationwide, they say that if you work with an agency like ours, you're sixty percent more likely to get a modification or a workout with your lender than if you try to go it alone, just because we know how the paperwork has to be, we know the questions to ask, and we know the numbers, and, you know, how to try to work with the lenders.
We don't generally get this information, but we're always concerned about, you know, who's facing foreclosure issues or who's, who might be losing their home. You had thirty-one people that you worked with, I think. So how many, how many of those folks actually ended up getting foreclosed on and losing their homes?
That I do not know. Um, but I do know that in two thousand twelve, one hundred and eighty-two residents of Edina were three or more payments behind on their mortgage at one time. Um, Minnesota requires that if a lender, if you're three or more months behind, the lender has to notify an agency like ours, and then we notify the homeowners to let them know that there's an agency out there that would like to help them. So the one hundred and eighty-two people that were in that situation, at least thirty-two, or thirty-one reached out for assistance. We're hoping to, we'd like to increase that number, we'd like to help more of those people.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Dana? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And HomeLine?
Mayor Hovland, members of the committee, my name is Beth Codleboy, I'm resident in Minneapolis. I'm the executive director of HomeLine, and I think I feel like I've come up here for a lot, many years, so I think I know many of you.
You are indeed a familiar face, Beth.
All right, I'll just quickly summarize what we do. HomeLine operates a tenant hotline where any resident in Edina who is a renter can call and get legal advice about any questions they have about their lease and their rental situation, and that's available to any, any renter, regardless of income. We want, and I might as well give out the number since we're doing that tonight, we're plugging things. You can give us a call at six one two seven two eight five seven six seven. Um, and also, there's a lot of information available on our website at www.homelinen.org. So if you're a renter out there, please feel free to take a look and see what we have for resources. Um, just want to summarize some of the, uh, one of the things I want to emphasize is that our goal is to give residents the tools they need to solve the problems themselves. We don't actually do a lot of direct representation. Did a nice summary of, of how many residents we serve last year. I just want to highlight some of the issues that we are and aren't seeing in Edina this year. Uh, for the first time in five years, if you look at our fact sheet, we don't have landlord foreclosure as one of our issues in the top ten, and I'm happy to report that. Um, that's one of the most devastating issues that we've seen affecting residents. It's nice to see it drop out of the top ten in the City of Edina. It's not the case in a lot of other cities, so. Um, there's only one landlord foreclosure that we dealt with last year. Hopefully this trend will continue. The other thing that I wanted to point out is there's a pretty tight rental market right now, and there's a lot of apartment buildings being built to try to catch up to that. But what we're seeing is notice-to-vacate and break-lease issues being more of an issue. So people feeling the squeeze from the market and, and really having to deal with the issues of not being able to find places. So hopefully the number of apartments come online to alleviate some of that, but that's, that's the reason why some of these issues are in here. Normally, we see repairs, security deposit, eviction is our top three, and that's a little skewed now because of the tight market. Um, and one last thing I want to plug, we also, I know we mention this every year, but we do work with cities to do, provide landlord trainings. That's something we do to help raise funds for us, but also to inform landlords about their rights and responsibilities. So we want to make sure that that offer is out there for the city, and also to work with social workers and social network, or any of the people who work with low-income folks in the city. We, that offer is always open, and feel free to contact me to set that up and work with the city to provide those trainings.
Okay, good, thanks, Beth. Questions for Beth? Oh, Members Bragg?
What cities do you perform those services in right now?
Right now, we have, we actually started out as a program of Community Action for Suburban Hennepin, and we've expanded statewide everywhere except the city of Minneapolis.
Thanks.
Good, thanks, Beth. Good to see you again. Thanks for coming in. And now, Walt. I see our, another familiar face back here. Get an update on how things are going in Edina with the program.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Janet Linbo, and I'm the executive director of, we don't, WALT's our legal name. Homes Within Reach is the name we really use because whenever you say Walt, you think you want to look for Walt in the background, I, I must admit. So I'll refer to the organization as Homes Within Reach. Um, first of all, thank you for partnering with our organization. We began in two thousand seven and working with the City of Edina, and it's been truly a wonderful partnership. Joyce did a wonderful job in summarizing our program. Um, I will say that the, the organization is ten years old, and we've just recently purchased our hundredth and first home, and of which Edina has eight of our, our, our homes that we've created, affordable for our homeowners. Um, also, I've heard a lot today talk about, um, foreclosures. We've faced that as well in our organization. We've used some of cash support as well, because they're a good partner. But I can say that in Edina, we haven't had to face that. Our homeowners have been strong and have been, haven't lost jobs or health issues, and have been able to maintain their home, and we're very pleased with that. Um, as I said, we're looking forward to working on our ninth home. We have multiple candidates in our applicant pool anxiously waiting. Uh, with the reduction of funding, as you've experienced, what, uh, Homes Within Reach has done, is gone out and raised additional funds with Minnesota Housing, Home, HIF through Hennepin County, HRA, and a little bit of private funding, so that we've been able to augment that. And the, the land trust program works so well in communities like Edina where the land costs are so high in the entry-level homes, really be, being able to provide homeownership for those that work and live in the community. And it, it's, it's a pleasure to see some of the success stories and testimonials that we've had. Matter of fact, Minnesota Housing, when we gave our presentation for a request, they wanted to feature a homeowner, and we featured an Edina homeowner, and it was really quite successful. The board was very pleased with the outcomes.
Thank you. Questions for Janet? Members Bragg?
Generally, what are the income requirements for the program?
Very much the HUD guidelines. Um, anywhere from, and it depends on family size, size, anywhere from low thirties to up to sixty, sixty-four thousand for a family of four, and then it increases with the number of families. Our average AMI is, for the organization, is, is fifty-seven percent, which is about forty-two thousand dollars income. And in Edina, it's, it's, it's close, just about a percent up, so we've really been able to serve those modest-income workforce families.
And for forty-two thousand, you're saying household?
Mm-hmm, per household, yes.
It seems to be like in the past, you've given us sort of a general demographic profile of some of the folks that have been able to use the program in Edina. I recall teachers, and, and maybe you can talk a little bit about that without identifying people or.
Most of all, our applicants either live or work in Edina, and either have lived in a rental or, or work presently in Edina. Or, I think there's one that has family connections, so they all have a very important connection as our other communities. We have a variety of, a, a single female head of households, and we have, we have four and five, uh, in, uh, four and five families, sized families. So it kind of, it's very broad, and it ranges very broad. And most of our homeowners, um, like to be, you know, we're a scattered-site, um, organization where we don't cluster our homes. All our communities have wanted a scattered site, and our homeowners are pretty private about participating in the land trust because they want to integrate within the community and don't want to be singled out.
Okay, good, thank you. Member Bennett?
Um, thank you. It's my understanding that some of the funding that is raised goes to rehabilitation or renovation of the homes. I know that you're not talking granite countertops, but I know that you are talking about some landscaping and exterior improvements. Do you want to expand on that a little bit?
Sure. I probably am probably really knowledgeable about that right now because, you know, as the market has changed, the real estate market has changed, we've seen more and more need with rehab in our homes. Those homes that we bought, whether they're from seniors who are finding alternative living settings or, or foreclosed properties, the requirement of rehab is significant. And also, we have a lot of funding requirement, green communities, lead abatement, all of those things. So we do a variety of energy-efficient, hazard-free things to our homes. We don't make them, in quotes, pretty, we let the homeowners do that, but new windows, new HVAC, insulation, um, those kinds of things that can provide a really solid, mechanical, efficient home, and that our homeowner doesn't have to put money into the first twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months of their occupancy, so they can build up a reserve for that.
Good, thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
Good. This is a public hearing matter with regard to the proposed use of these funds, and I'm going to open it up for public testimony now. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, hearing no one?
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And, Member Swenson?
I would like to move Agenda Item six A. I did serve on CAPSH, and I'm thrilled to have Mary go on to the CAPSH board. But all these groups are wonderful, and I'm glad that we can do at least this minimum amount of work with them.
Second with gratitude for the work that's being done in our community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And Ms. Repia, thank you for your very nice presentation. It was very, very helpful. Now, we have one other public hearing tonight, and it is a variance appeal involving a property at fifty-eight oh one Crescent Terrace, and Ms. Acker has this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. This is an, is an appeal by Mr. Kevin Gilligan.
We need a little more volume on your.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Slightly better.
Okay. Um, this is an appeal by Mr. Kevin Gilligan of a front yard setback variance request for fifty-eight oh one Crescent Terrace for Nicole Sundberg. The property is located as highlighted. It consists of a Rambler with an attached garage, as you can see here. This is a photograph of the house as it exists today. This is the property that's directly west, and a photograph of the property that's to the southeast, adjacent to the subject property. The applicant is proposing to remove the existing home and rebuild on the site with a two-story Mediterranean-style home. The original plan was to rebuild in the approximate location of where the existing house is today. Uh, this is a site plan showing the existing conditions with the location of the existing house. The existing house is located fifty-one point nine feet back from the front lot line. The ordinance requires that you average the front yard setbacks of the homes on either side. In this instance, it backs up the average front yard setback to be seventy-seven point seven five feet. Uh, so it's much further back for the average front yard setback that's required for the lot than where the existing house is right now. This is a site plan of what had been proposed for the property, the Mediterranean-style home, with roughly the same front yard setback as the existing home. What you'll notice is the garage would be on the west side with the main portion of the house towards the east, a driveway curb cut with a large roundabout in front of the house. This is the front elevation, this would be if you were standing, looking south towards the front of the house again. The proposed garage for the original plan was towards the west. The required average front yard setback, again, is seventy-seven point seven five feet or twenty-five point eight five feet further back than the existing home. That was the original variance request. The new home will be a two-story Mediterranean-style home, which will conform to all of the ordinance's requirements. Um, on December twelfth, twenty-twelve, the planning commission approved the twenty-five-foot, roughly almost twenty-six-foot front yard setback variance to rebuild the new home on the site at the existing non-conforming setback of fifty-one point nine feet by a seven-to-one vote. On December seventeenth, twenty-twelve, the. 17, 2012, the Edina City Clerk received a notice of appeal from Kevin Gilligan, who lives across the street on Crescent Terrace at 5804 Crescent Terrace, requesting that the City Council review the Planning Commission's approval of the 25.85-foot front yard setback. On February 13, 2013, the Edina City Clerk received a notice of conditional settlement of the variance appeal, indicating that the appellant, Kevin Gilligan, will withdraw the pending appeal of December 12, 2012. Decision of the Planning Commission provided that the City Council approves and ratifies a reduction in the variances agreed upon by the applicant, Nicole Sundberg, and the appellant, Kevin Gilligan. The reduced variance and conditions to the variance include, and what I'll have you note is that the site plan that was submitted to you along with the packet does indicate a front yard setback of 67.5 feet. Actually, that should be 68 feet, because the request would be a 9.75-foot front yard setback variance. And so that has been reduced from almost a 25-foot setback variance. The applicants and the appellant have worked together to try to come up with a plan that's agreeable to both parties. What happens is the garage is now over on the east side. The main part of the house is towards the west. It's then putting some of the amenities that were behind the house, a pool, towards the west of the property. Again, Kevin Gilligan and the appellant, Nicole Sundberg, have reduced the variance to a 9.75-foot front yard setback variance, based on that the home and garage to be constructed on the property shall be built within the boundaries specified on the site plan, given the fact that it's a 68-foot front yard setback, and that the garage to be constructed on the property will not exceed a single story. It's now on the east side, and that the plans shall not contain nor shall applicant permit the construction or installation of a large driveway turnaround as depicted on the original plan for the variance. Staff recommends the City Council approve the modified 9.75-foot front yard setback variance in replacement of the 25.85-foot front yard setback variance, as agreed upon by the applicant, Nicole Sundberg, and the appellant, Kevin Gilligan, with variance conditions as indicated previously and stated in the resolution attached to the staff report, to build a new home on the property located at 5801 Crescent Terrace. With that, I will stop and answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Acker at this point in time? Member Bennett?
Yes. So Ms. Acker, looking at, again, preliminary site plan dated, date stamped, February 11, 2012, that states, it has a, the lowest of the dashed lines shows a front yard setback of 77.25 feet, and that is incorrect.
That is incorrect. They inadvertently used 77.25 instead of 77.75. So that in turn changes the front yard setback to be 68 feet with a variance request of 9.75 feet. And that's reflected in the resolution.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gilligan is the appellant, and I think we'll hear from Mr. Gilligan And then we'll bring up Ms. Sundberg or anyone else. Were there multiple appellants, Mr. Gilligan?
I think so.
Okay.
As a group? Yeah, the answer is yes. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you.
And your name and address, please.
Kevin Gilligan, 5804 Crescent Terrace. We're directly across the street from the house in question. I wanted to just share two comments tonight on behalf of myself and our immediate neighbors. The first is, we want to thank the City Council for taking the time to listen to our concerns. We would say, as we went through this process, it wasn't until we filed the appeal and the City Council engaged in the question that we felt our voices were being heard in the process. We just want to thank you for doing your job. The second comment we want to make is regarding our experience with the Planning Office and the Planning Commission, which we would characterize as far less positive and satisfactory. When we first learned of the initial variance request, we expected, in dealing with the Planning Office and the Planning Commission, that they would be very interested to hear the concerns or the points of view of the immediate neighbors, and objectively challenge whether or not the variance request met the legal requirements for variance. And, you know, without getting into all the details tonight, I would just say our experience was quite the contrary. We did not feel our voice was heard, despite repeated efforts. We kind of felt like this, that the Planning Office and the Planning Commission was more interested in sort of pushing this through than to really understand what the concerns were. So as a result, we ended up having to file an appeal. We had to incur significant legal expense to work this issue. We had to spend a lot of time and energy working with other neighbors in the neighborhood to understand what their points of view were. So while we're ending up, I think, in an acceptable place, we would say the process was unnecessary, and that if the Planning Office and the Planning Commission had taken a different approach, we might have ended up in the same place or better place for a lot less money and a lot less difficulty and hassle. And so we offer that, that observation, in the hopes that in the future, the Planning Office and the Planning Commission might consider changes in their approach, so other people that are facing similar circumstances don't have to go through the same process that we did. So with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Stand by, Mr. Gilligan. I want to see if anyone in the council has a question for you. If not, I do. And I understand, just so it's clear, that what Ms. Acker articulated in terms of an outcome that's satisfactory to the adjoining property owners.
It is.
You concur in that?
We do.
All right. And the only other question I had for you related to, when I look at the preliminary site plan, and I look at the circular driveway compared to the circular drive in the original plan, this one has landscaping between the circle drive and the street, and I don't really see that articulated in the structure of the agreement that was made. I see a language that says the plan should not contain the installation of a large driveway turnaround depicted on the original site plan, but it seemed to me that if the preliminary site plan that was dated, as Member Bennett said, February 11, 2012, satisfies you, that could also be a condition of this agreement.
It could be.
Is that, am I assuming something I shouldn't be assuming?
It could be. At this point, it is not a specified condition. I just want to check with our council. Is that correct? No. So it's not a specified condition today.
No, it's not a specified condition, but it seemed to me to be
We wouldn't...
A clarification of the last condition for...
We wouldn't object to that.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mollison, I take it. Good to see you. Okay. Stand by. Are there other appellants? People had appealed the variance grant from the...
That would like to speak.
There are, I think there are other neighbors that would like to speak.
Other neighbors, yeah. But you were the lead appellant, I think.
I was.
Maybe right now I'll bring up Ms. Sundberg. Or Mr. Sundberg? And your name and address, please. We'll get you a handheld microphone if you're going to use the...
Sure. Nate Wesink, in 4120 Upton Avenue South, Minneapolis. I'm with Streeter and Associates, and we represent Nicole and her husband Jeff in their pursuit of the variance. And so we don't have a whole lot to add tonight, except that these documents here actually update for what Chris had mentioned, and what the appellate group had pointed out to us today was an inaccurate calculation on our part. So we've got these here copies for you that show the 68-foot
Sure.
front yard setback, okay? And then I would just say, just in general, we're, you know, I wouldn't say that everything went as planned, both in terms of our process or in process of working with the nearby neighbors, but I would say this, is that we are appreciative of their efforts to work with us, and subsequently, I hope that they feel the same way. And I do feel like collectively, we've got to a place that feels good. And so, Mayor, your suggestion of working with them in terms of the discussions was very helpful in how we approached it subsequent to the Planning Commission decision, so...
I think there were several council members that suggested that you get together and talk with them. Mr. Wesink, just for the record, let me make, let's have it clear on the record that you're able to represent on behalf of the Sundbergs that the structure of this agreement, as it relates to the immediate neighbors around the subject property at 5801 Crescent Terrace, is satisfactory to the Sundbergs.
That's correct.
All right. Okay, thank you. And now I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. And if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify, you'll have three minutes. You'll get a yellow light. Mr. Mollison, you'll recognize this form of discussion here as an attorney?
Again, I don't have a tremendous amount to add either.
Name and address, please.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Marcus Mollison. I'm an attorney with the Lindquist &amp; Venom Law Firm, located on 80 South 8th Street in Minneapolis, and also I am a resident of Edina. And as I was just saying, I don't have a tremendous amount to add factually, other than I think it is, you asked the question, Mr. Mayor, and I think we should answer. Mr. Gilligan and I are here on behalf of our group of four families who are my client, and we are all in agreement with the terms of this resolution. And so, you know, there may be other neighbors who may have other feelings, other sentiments to express, but we're here representing the appellant on this.
All right. Mr. Mollison, if I hand you this preliminary site plan that's been revised by Mr. Wesink, I'm wondering whether you think it'd be appropriate or important to your clients to have that as part of the record or part of the agreement?
Yes. And as I'm looking at this, this is, this needs to be part of the agreement, because it shows where the actual building footprint is, and one of the conditions is that the building footprint can't deviate more than a certain distance, five feet on either side or in the rear. So it does need to be a part of the agreement.
All right. And Mr. Wesink, we concur in that. Would you come up here, please, and give us, tell us whether you agree or disagree with that being part of the agreement?
Yeah, we concur.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to open it up for further public hearing. Anything else, Mr. Mollison?
That's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Welcome. And you may have heard me. You'll have three minutes, and you'll get a little yellow caution light when you've got 30 seconds left. And welcome. And your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your name and, yeah, your name and address.
Council members, my name is Tim Grant. I'm actually a resident of Edina. I live on 5701 Dale Avenue. But I'm not here for myself today. I'm here actually representing the Brad and Susan Baker, who are the neighbors directly to the southeast of this property on a somewhat different issue. An issue arose, oh, not too long ago, regarding the actual location of the borderline between the, what's going to be the Sundberg property and the Baker property. And I have with me no less than four surveys showing that line at different places. It varies, I've been working with Nate, but it varies maybe three, four feet here or there, and the Bakers are working with Streeter to locate that line in a way that works for them. And I don't think that line actually affects the variance here. As I understand the variance, it's a front yard setback variance.
Correct.
And it looks like there's plenty of room on the side yard between the Sundberg property and the Baker's property to reach an agreement with respect to exactly where that line is. But one of those surveys that differ, but the problem is, is that the record has drawings in it which show a very specific line on that southeast side. And although there does seem to be an agreement between the appellants, it's with respect to the front yard setback, that border still needs to be located. And I, it's not adversarial. We just have to find out where it is. And then there'll be appropriate documents that the closing of the sale of the property from the Sundberg estate, or from the estate of Moan, I think, to the Sundbergs, which will either document the proper location of that line or create an easement such that current improvements by the Bakers can remain.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Member Swenson, then we'll go to Roger.
Tim, you said the house to the southeast. So it's a backyard and a garage setback, is that correct?
Yes. It's where the garage is located.
And the backyard setback, correct me if I'm not wrong, this would be 25 feet. What?
It would be five, because the side yard is 25.
Oh, you consider that a side yard? Okay. So it doesn't come into play in this at all. Okay. Thank you.
So we thought it was important to at least make a record of the fact that that line may move, and that's not part of the consent process.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Grant. And let's turn to our city attorney and see if the city has any role in that private property issue.
As the mayor and members of the council know, the city has lots of authority, but we don't decide where property lines lie. Other people have that role. But it's good that it's been brought to our attention, and now we're aware of it, but it really doesn't affect granting or not granting the variance.
Good. Thanks, Mr. Grant.
Right, because it might affect the permit process, I suppose, you know, which comes later. Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Hubland and the council members. I'm Anne Bentall. I live at 4995 Rolling Green Parkway. And I am here as a friend and neighbor of Suzanne and Kip Nellman, who were not able to be here this evening because they're out of state. And they had submitted a letter to you, Mayor Hubland, and to the council members on January 14, and they asked if I would come here this evening and just read a letter that they sent to me earlier today. So I'm simply here to do that this evening. Dear Edina City Council members, since neither Suzanne nor I could be at the meeting tonight, we are appreciative that our neighbor will read our following comments. In our previous letter, we set forth that we believe are legal reasons to deny the variance. Tonight, we reiterate the voice of our view, the motion to allow any variance to the existing zoning law be denied. The Minnesota State statute denies variances if they have been self-created. The applicant knew prior to any purchase of the property that there was existing setback requirements. The Edina Planning Commission, in their recommendation, failed to disclose that applicant, as a potential buyer and not as an owner, had full knowledge of the existing setback zoning laws. Minnesota courts have held that prior knowledge of existing setback requirements is one factor that has denied applicants that have self-created the need for a variance. In addition, the Edina Planning Commission findings were based on arbitrary and capricious criteria. The commission justifies the variance on providing that the applicant a reasonable backyard. Yet nowhere in the zoning ordinance is there any reference to the right of a reasonable backyard. To convey this variance to the applicant is to provide a right not afforded to any other Edina resident. Let us not forget that the applicant has a 12,600 square foot building pad to support a 5,000-plus square foot first floor, and apparently a 3,500-plus square foot of hardscape, backyard, pool, loja, cupboard, porch, et cetera, as well as leaving approximately 4,000-plus square feet of backyard grass. How is that not a reasonable backyard? It should be noted that the applicant's design creates the hardscape. It is the design itself that is problematic, not the property. The neighbors have been backed into a compromise that directly counters the actual zoning laws that are on the books. We find it unreasonable to believe that there should be any discussion on compromise when the applicant has self-created the issue and the neighborhood has the zoning law behind their argument. We are for compromise, but only when it is not going to violate the existing law that is in force. Are we to presume that the Planning Commission has the ability to make law whenever someone decides they want a variance that is to counter the existing zoning laws? The planning department failed to provide the Planning Commission and the City Council the proper and objective analysis that falls under their responsibilities. They have created zoning laws to support the findings in which they have no legal jurisdiction to do so. We believe the courts would share this finding. We ask that the City Council vote to uphold the existing zoning laws and deny the request for the variance on the grounds it has been self-created and unique to the applicant and not to the property. Sincerely, Suzanne and Kip Nellman. And they live on Rolling Green Parkway. And they live on Rolling Green Parkway.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Bentall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved second.
A motion of second to close the public hearing? Discussion, those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carry it. Talk about some discussion here on the, I think on the Nellman issue, it's, you know, there may be an agreement struck with joining property owners on what they would be comfortable with in terms of a variance, but there are still standards for issuance of a variance. Ms. Ocker, you've covered those, I think, in the proposed resolution? Is that correct? Would you come up here, please?
Mayor.
Yep, members, ready?
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Wesink, and just to clarify the record on the survey that was brought up, three or four surveys, what survey are you relying on for your application? Can you clarify? I know you didn't do three or four.
We're relying on the Woody Browns or Woodrow Brown survey that was originally dated. I think it's around November 25th, 2012.
And that's what was filed with the application?
Yeah, the original application.
And you're, are you aware of any inconsistent surveys that are out there that?
The, we found out that the Moone Estate had actually done a survey, so the estate that Sunburgs, our clients are purchasing the property from, had done a survey with a gentleman named Herb Lemire, and Herb did that, I think, in April of 2006.
Okay.
When the Baker's pool was put in. And so there's a discrepancy between that survey on the south property line, I'm going to call it the south property line of 5801 Crescent Terrace, and the north property line of the Baker property. And so we are working through that, we just literally got a copy of that survey yesterday, and so we've been in touch with Herb and Woodrow Brown to figure out why there's a discrepancy there. But the reality is, in terms of its outcome, in terms of this, the proposed outcome, it doesn't have any effect on the outcome.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Ms. Ocker, if you would come up, please, and walk through the standards for granting of a variance, and give your staff interpretation as to why you think this proposed variance meets the standards, 9.75 feet on the front yard setback.
Thank you. The proposal would meet the required standards for variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as the proposed home will uphold the established front yard setback pattern that's already existing on the block. Actually, it backs it up quite a bit from the established pattern between the two homes that are existing on either side. Edina is rather unique in that we don't have a standard set front yard setback. Most cities have 30 or 35 is the minimum front yard setback, and that's, that's the standard all across the board. Edina's ordinance is a little bit elastic in that it allows or requires the average of the homes on either side. That actually was changed not so long ago, it used to be that you had a number of choices, you could either average them all along the block between intersections, or average the two homes on either side, or draw a parallel line between the two homes on either side. So in terms of the base setback that's required for a property in Edina, it is more elastic than in other cities, it's not a set setback, and I think that was done to maintain the established setback pattern that's already existing in the different neighborhoods that we have in Edina. The practical difficulties in complying with the ordinance include the triangular shape of the lot, most of the lot is street frontage, I mean, there's, it's all street frontage pretty much all the way around, with just two interior side lot lines, and the resulting amount of front yard that must be maintained, given the required setback and the imposition of a deeper front yard setback, given that the lot has always had a home located closer to the street than the neighboring properties. The home that's there right now was not built with variances, so at some point in time, the home that was built there at the 51.9-foot front yard setback was conforming, the rules have changed. So now those changes certainly do affect the buildable area of the lot. With the exception of the variance requested, the proposal would meet the required standards and ordinance within the R1 single dwelling unit district, all of their ordinances would be complied with. The proposed use of the property is reasonable as it is consistent with the comprehensive guide plan, and the proposal is in harmony with the intent of the ordinance, since it will allow replacement of a home that had occupied the lot in the past and was originally located, or will be located closer to the street than what they're proposing currently.
Good, thank you. Member Bennett?
I have a request for technology, and that is pages 410 and 411 of the comprehensive plan, if they can be brought up on screen, they're relevant, and then, Ms. Ocker, could we go to A1 site location in the staff report? Okay, great, thank you. The text description of this is in the comprehensive plan, and you stated that Edina is unique and not requiring a set, fixed setback. The comprehensive plan at 411 refers to the common characteristics of a garden suburb, which is how it refers to the Country Club District, and also what it calls the interlocken area, Rolling Green and Hilldale, and talks about mature trees, regular building setbacks and massing, not identical, similar historical revival architectural styles, interconnected and gently curved street pattern, punctuated by landscaped triangles and islands at intersections. Then goes on to state that the interlocken area is characterized as differentiated from Country Club District by no sidewalks, and also by larger lots, larger homes, and proportionally more green space. So I'm looking at A1, and what I'm seeing is, in fact, a lot of irregularly shaped lots. I look at 4801 Bywood, 4800, both of which are pie-shaped. I look also at 4733 Merrillane, 4708 Merrillane, which is all pretty similar, actually, if an overlay were done of the subject property of 5801. 4820, immediately across the street, is what would be termed a corner lot if there were a corner, but instead has a sweep. And even 33 has quite a sweep. So it looks to me like the neighborhood character of this is actually that oddly shaped lot, and that rather than an oddly shaped lot being unique in this neighborhood, it's in fact part of the character of the neighborhood. And I guess I'm not really stating this as a question, but that's a conclusion that I come to when I look at this map and I look at what's pointed out as neighborhood characteristic in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have some questions for Roger, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. The questions that I have are around some other things that Ms. Ocker referred to, and that is where the location of the currently existing home, and what is the grandfather in concept, and how far does it extend? My understanding is that if a homeowner isn't a property, that property is damaged, they're on fire, they have the right to rebuild what is there today, even if it is not conforming. Does that right extend to a subsequent purchaser as well, to tear that house down and rebuild what is there?
Yes.
Does that right?
You have one year after the house is torn down.
Okay, okay, and that is, again, what is there? Same, same footprint, same height?
You can't expand the nonconformity.
Okay, in other, by square footage, as well as?
Depending on what the nonconformity was.
Whatever it is, okay.
If the nonconformity here was, for example, the setback was nonconforming.
Sure.
Under that statute, you couldn't expand the nonconformity by going forward more, putting more stuff inside that.
Or by bringing more of the house forward?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so a purchaser would have the right to rebuild what's there, but not build more of what's there in front of that nonconformity?
You could not increase the nonconformity.
Okay, and I believe that there was some discussion at the planning commission about the, one of the planning commissioners asked whether or not a second story could be built on the home that is there today, and Ms. Ocker said, no, they could not, because that would be more in the nonconformity.
I would concur with that.
Okay. Is there any place in our code that you are aware of that requires or guarantees what has been referred to in testimony here, and also before the planning commission, and in correspondence as a backyard?
I haven't looked at that issue, but not that I'm aware of.
I know that we have setbacks, but...
We have setback requirements.
Right.
So that'd create a backyard, I guess.
Okay. I also have a procedural question that was actually raised to me by someone familiar with the planning commission's discussion of this. When an agreement, when a appellant's appeal, a decision, a recommendation of the planning commission, which would have stood as a final decision if not appealed, and there is an agreement to change what was decided by the planning commission, does that go back to the planning commission, or is that procedurally correctly in front of us this evening?
You could send it back, but you don't have to. The reducing what was approved, not increasing it. If they had, I'll make up a number, if they'd approved a 30-foot variance, and now they wanted a 35-foot variance, and it was advertised as a 30-foot variance, you couldn't approve a 35 one, you'd have to go back and start over again. If you were... Couldn't be less, but not more.
Okay, okay. And I think finally, for now, well, two more things. One is that the, there was a letter to the council that was dated January 14, and that was not in our council packet, and I did request that a copy be, copies be made in place before council members this evening, so that Nellman letter from January 14 that was missing from the packet is in front of council members this evening. And then finally, I guess, this is by way more of discussion, less of question. This question has been raised at some of the meetings that are being held about massing, usually on smaller lots, but that is a question of what is more significant when people are choosing to relocate or choosing to rebuild, and that is whether it's the neighborhood, the lot, or the house. And I, one person at the Saturday morning meeting, Mayor, that you and I attended, actually said, you can't build everything on every lot. And I think that that's a discussion that we're facing around the city, whereas if it's a neighborhood that's most important to people, then it's the lots that are in that neighborhood, and whatever the code defines as what's buildable for a house in that neighborhood, if it's the lot that's most important, then again, it's the code that defines what can be built on that lot, but if it's the style of house that's most important to people, then I think that choice of neighborhood and lot become more important and dependent on that. So those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's talk a little bit more, Roger, about this procedure, assuming we have a motion. We've got a, an appeal from a variance granting at 25 feet, the action requested in the report and recommendation is that we approve a 9.75-foot front yard setback variance in replacement of a 25.85-foot front yard setback variance. There's a resolution attached that embodies that language and the proposed agreement between the adjacent property owners and the applicant. There are the four conditions attached that are set forth in the resolution. We've added a fifth, and I think, I think it would be adequate to have language that said the home to be constructed shall be built according to the preliminary site plan, updated February 7, 2013, with revised setback information dated February 18, 2013. Is the requested action the only action that we have to take tonight with that modification on the conditions that everybody's agreed to that's adjoining, if that should be the course that the council chooses to take?
All you would have to do is adopt this resolution as you amended it, or as you amended it.
I will move that.
I will second that.
All right. Further discussion?
Yes.
Member Brendel.
I have difficulty with the idea that the hardship is on the homeowners. I mean, with the, that the hardship comes from the lot. The lot provides plenty of room to build a house, and in my, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems to me that the, and I, I'll call, I'll call the Sunburgs homeowners only because it's convenient, because they don't own the property yet unless something's happened that I am not aware of. But they have had a house designed and have been shopping for a lot to put it on. They haven't designed a house for this lot, per se. They've tried to modify this design for this lot, and in doing so, have created for themselves a hardship because of the lot that happens to be available. So looking at the variance law, which variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties in complying with the official control, and I don't know that there really are difficulties in complying with the controls based on this lot. A house could be designed to fit in the buildable portion of this lot, the homeowners just are choosing not to do that. So to me, that's a self-created hardship or difficulty. So anyway, that's, that's where I am with this. I'd prefer to see a home that embraces the slope of this lot, I'd like to see less impervious surface. In other words, it doesn't bother me that there's a circle drive, it doesn't bother me that there's a large parking pad there, but it ought to be some material that is pervious or allows stormwater to seep through it, so that the stormwater that hits that area doesn't flow right into the storm sewer and lakes and rivers, which is something we are working very hard on. And there's significant amount of hard space around this property, built the way it is designed to be built. So I think that is a challenge that I would put out there, is that a home could be built that fits into the buildable space of this lot without a variance, and it could employ some material that allows stormwater to be handled right on the lot, rather than being added to, to the stormwater sewer. So anyway, I plan to vote against this unless somebody can absolutely convince me that this is, that I'm looking at it incorrectly. I just don't see that the hardships are, are part of the lot itself, I think it's part of the design of the home.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
What?
Your legal counsel raises his hand.
The terminology is difficult. We've recently changed terminology, and it can be quite confusing, just to make sure we're all using the right terminology. The term undue hardship is written out of the statute, that is no longer a statutory term. The term the legislature has chosen to substitute with is practical difficulties. A practical difficulty means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, so the question is, is the proposal to use it in a reasonable manner not permitted by the zoning ordinance, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, that's, so we're using the right terminology.
Okay.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
I am on the other side of where Mary is, because I think this lot does give practical difficulties. I think also our elastic setback tends to give practical difficulties. We have houses that get built at different times, and they choose to be built on different parts of lots, and we've seen this, two weeks ago when we looked at a, two lots that we were going to change the property line on, and if you looked at where the house was built next to it that got built later, and Carrie, you and I had a discussion about and Carrie, you and I had a discussion about this. You could never even build a house on this lot that we were adding some property to because we are changing a line. So I think we have to look at that as a practical difficulty, as this is a pie-shaped lot. It goes around a circle. It is all front yard setback. And I support this. I think it's a reasonable manner. If I look at the house, you may not agree that this house would be what you would build on this lot. But if I look at what has been built all over Rolling Green right now, this house is really no different than what I've seen built on many other lots in Rolling Green. And I think it's a reasonable use of the lot, and I think the practical difficulty is the curve in the road. And I would support this.
Members break.
I just want to amplify that rationale. I think the, it's the configuration of the lot, the shape, how it lays out with the street, and then the configuration of setbacks around it, including the previous front yard setback. And that is unique. There may be other pie-shaped lots, but that particular set of facts is unique to this parcel. In terms of reasonable use, had you come forward with the 25 feet, I'm not sure I would feel the same, but that's, that's not what you have agreed to stipulate. And this, to me, seems to be a reasonable accommodation to allow the project to go forward.
Thank you. Member Bennett, comment?
Yes, brief comment, and that is that I do appreciate the work that has gone into this and the fact that people have engaged in neighborly and productive discussions and reached an agreement. I feel, I, we all, I think, take our quasi-judicial role very seriously and try to come into these meetings with an open mind. And in looking at all the materials together, including the comprehensive plan, all the materials submitted in the staff report, the correspondence testimony this evening, I can't find that the standards for a variance have been satisfied. And I do understand it's a, again, a, an oddly shaped lot or a somewhat part of a circle, but so, I think, are other lots in the neighborhood. And so my decision is that I cannot support the variance even at its revised, in its revised form.
Thank you. When I first looked at this property after the Planning Commission acted, and I saw the site plan with the buildable area shown on the, on the lot, the buildable area really mirrored the triangular shape of the lot and created some interesting design issues, I, I thought. And I, and I don't think the first attempt that went to the Planning Commission really took advantage of the building site. And it pushed everything up against the property to the west, the Ramsey property. And the garage was pushed into the corner, and there was a lot of the buildable site that was still vacant to the east. Now what I see with the adjustment by the architect is a, is a housing pad with the garage moved to the other side, that moves it to the east side of the property, that really gets it more into the, the buildable space that's, that's available. And, and now the pool is on the Ramsey property side and not the garage. And I think for them, their vista is going to be, maybe enhanced, it's going to be okay. And, and so I've come to the conclusion that with this, with this reworking that's been done by Streeter and the architect and the concurrence, the input by the neighbors, that the practical, there were practical difficulties with this property. Myself, I might have preferred to see some low-slung rambler on that building pad, but it's not my choice in terms of building. And I think the owner intends to use the property with the revised plan in a reasonable manner. I think the setback, the front yard setback is really de minimis now. And there's a dramatic change in how the, the house cites the street on Crescent Terrace. Most houses in Rolling Green have these rolling front yards that are very impressive. And, and now this captures that feeling of Rolling Green in my mind. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote to approve this, this matter as well.
So call the question.
So we're going to vote on this. All those in favor of the approving the variance or the, the arrangement that was set forth in the resolution with the addition of item five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Thank you, folks, for your participation.
And you got a huge airport noise education that you wouldn't have had if you hadn't been here, so.
All right. Now we're going to a community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address a concern with the council? Seeing no one coming forward, we move to the next portion of the agenda, which is the reports and recommendations portion. First, we have a resolution 2013-21, accepting various donations.
So move.
Second that.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. And then the next matter on...
I'd like to...
Yeah. Member Brendel, go ahead. I've misplaced my...
Oh, here.
Go ahead, if you want to point something out.
You want the list? Okay. All right. The, the donations this time are to the Edina Art Center and for some, four rolls of metallic tape and some art books. And then to the Edina Park Department, there's a nice donation for the Courtney Field scoreboard from Chris Davis of $31,090. So much appreciated. And then one I'd like to point out is some of the proceeds from the bike ride last fall. Tour de Edina, $3,500 to Edina Park and Rec. For, that, that will be used to, to purchase and install bike racks in Edina's parks. And those funds were made available from Edina Health, or Edina, Alina Health, who is the main sponsor of the Tour de Edina.
All right. Thank you. Next is 8B, which is the construction management plan matter that was added to the agenda at the request of Member Bennett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that a lot of us have received correspondence and probably some telephone calls recently regarding construction management issues. And I know that we have a work session on massing and construction management scheduled for 5:00 on March 5th, Tuesday. And I would like to request that the construction management plan in the interim between this meeting and that meeting be given to our attorney for review as to what elements of it are currently in our ordinances and therefore can be enforced today, and what elements are, at this point, missing from our ordinances, which of our ordinances may need revision, and which ordinances we may need added in order to give our residents the protections, the balance that they are seeking with respect to new construction activities.
Can I add a caveat on that? Because I notified a number of people that had emailed us that I would do this tonight. I'm glad Member Bennett brought that up because the part that I want to bring up is what we can do to have more teeth to getting it complied with. And my idea is this, so when you look at it, the ordinance, part of it is important. I want to be able to have a sliding scale of you get a warning, you get a fine the second time. The third time, it's a double fine. The fourth time, I'm interested, can we put in a stop-work order until you pay your fines and comply with what? Whatever it is that we need to do to get the builder's attention, because warning them to date hasn't seemed to work. So, oh, you've got your pen finger in the air.
Maybe something akin to the penalty matrix for our liquor ordinance.
I was thinking of that.
Exactly right.
But I want it, I want the, the question answered, can, at one point, can we give them a stop-work order until they've paid their fines and reviewed the construction management plan and what they're going to do going forward? So I know we have some questions of can we give them occupancy? Or do we have the ability to delay it if there are still some pending issues with neighbors? That would be another, you know, final step. I, I hate to go to these draconian points, but I don't think we have a choice because what we've seen to date is that we've had little attention that we've gotten by giving the warnings. They continue to, to do the same things repeatedly, and that's a problem. I did get a call today about trash that's left in front of a teardown, which I'm going to give you that to look at tomorrow because it's the house on 59th and St. John's that just went down, that you called me about the tree. Well, they covered up the mattresses and the couch that have been in the front yard for two weeks with some plywood boards last night because one of the neighbors went and took a picture of them because they're so upset having to look at it. But I don't think in our construction management plan, we have anything about trash you've set out. But I assume somewhere else in our city code, we do. So could you send somebody out tomorrow to the house on the, one away from the corner of 59th and St. John's, on St. John's, and make sure that they haven't continued to cover? It'll snow tomorrow, so maybe we won't be able to have to look at it for another week, right?
Member Swenson, are you asking the city attorney what our possible penalties can be?
Yeah. Well, I want to know if it's in ordinance form, then we can have a matrix. If it's not in ordinance form, can we still have a penalty matrix? Or do we need to get it in ordinance form to do that?
That's, those are the questions that I'm asking. I understand that some of the elements that are in the construction management plan are in our code, some are not. And I think that there's some redundancy so that the document is longer than it needs to be. So what I'm hoping for that is that in two weeks, it can come back to us with the references to code, where they exist, that where there are holes and there is something that should be able to be enforced and we need an ordinance, we can get a recommendation on that, that possibly we can adopt by the meeting after the next meeting. So we'll have it adopted within a month from tonight, within four weeks from tonight. That we would have the, I agree with Member Swenson that some kind of escalation of penalties. And I think we also use that for, for false alarms, when burglar alarms go off. We also, and for lawn watering on banned days, we have something that is different with the penalty. So I think that, and, and I want to be, make sure that I acknowledge that this is not a problem on every project or with every builder.
No.
But it does happen to be a problem that is occurring in many places in the community, and I think probably more than one builder. And, and so I think that there is something needed that both gives the city better capability of enforcement and also gets some people's attention. There are a couple of topics that I would love to know whether or not we have the ability to use excess consumption. I don't know if that's an area that we can use for building infractions.
What do you mean by that?
Excess consumption is when a...
That's the one you drink too much.
Well, no, it's like, it's a...
You've over served yourself.
You're in the wrong, wrong penalty matrix.
No, no, no. It's a term that gets used for cities when they have an inordinate number of police calls, which is actually, in some instances, what we're talking about here. And it usually is alcohol-related service. But when there is, when there are calls on disturbing the peace, calls on, there are cities that have an excess consumption fee that gets levied in addition to the others that serves that deterrent factor that Member Swenson was mentioning. Some other questions are foundations. We know that the method of creating foundations is new, that it used to be you dug a hole in the middle and built block, and now they excavate the yard, build forms and pour. And so in that instance, do we, as a city, have the ability to require bracing? Require it? Not, do we have the, the ability to require bonding when there is going to be that kind of excavation that touches the property line of the property next door? And has that inherent risk of damage to neighboring property? And of course, if there were no damage, there would be no payment on the bond. And those are some of the topics that I thought up. I would love to know if there are other areas in which we have some choices or some tools that we can possibly use. And then I understand that Manager Neil had a very informative conversation earlier today.
All right. Let's hear from Roger. Kind of interested in this penalty matrix notion. Member Swenson and I have been talking about it a little bit the last couple of days, so.
Violation of the city ordinance is a misdemeanor. And fines are imposed by the court system. You can have...
I need an easier way to do it, Roger.
What could be easier than the court system?
I can't answer that on the grounds I have to go home tonight and answer to the court system.
But you can, for example, with certain categories of offenses. For example, if you get a speeding ticket, most people who get a speeding ticket don't go to court. That, most people, I assume, pay the ticket. And you can have a list of fines if the court will approve them. So if I call up and let's say I, I was, was using a jackhammer when I shouldn't be and avoided, violated the noise ordinance, that list could say, first offense is whatever, second offense is whatever. But if I didn't like that, I don't have to pay it. I can go to court and say, no, I wasn't, I wasn't a jackhammer.
There's, there's...
Could if they refuse to pay it, could the option be that there's a stop-work order until they've gone to court?
I have to look at the type of violation. Stop-work orders generally just apply to violation of the building, the state building code. So I'll have to, and if the state building code applies, we are preempted. I think you can. I think the stop-work order provision under the state building code is broad enough, but I will have to review that.
Well, isn't our liquor matrix a civil penalty matrix?
Yes. And what happened there is the legislature specifically authorized it.
So...
The statute says we can do it.
So are you, are you saying that we can't have a civil penalty matrix for a construction management plan or undergirding a construction management plan? Because it seems to me that one other way to do it would be if we could have a civil matrix penalty system, we could actually, Anne and I were talking about this, you could actually set the, could you set the Construction Board of Appeals up as the body to which you appealed a decision?
Give them work. They never get work.
Yeah, you know, a decision to impose a civil penalty. And then we don't become, like we do with liquor, acting in a quasi-judicial capacity right away. The Construction Board of Appeals hears it first. They still have the right to appeal to us if they're not satisfied with that. But we put them to work handling all of these, you know, appeals that a contractor might have because he doesn't like that he got a civil penalty imposed on him.
The, the, Mayor, I know it's a little difficult to talk about quickly because this has been a big subject for lots of years in lots of cities. But for liquor, for cigarettes, there's a statutory, statute that says, "We can do this." There's specific statutory authority to do it. For what you're talking about now, there is, for civil penalties, there is not.
There's not a prohibition, but there's no authorization.
Yes.
So what does that mean? You can't do it because it isn't authorized?
Nobody's watching, Roger.
Again, I feel like...
Well, I think it's a fair question. I don't care if somebody hears.
The short answer is, cities can only do what they're statutorily authorized to do.
Creatures of the state.
There are virtually no implied authority, virtually.
Mm-hmm. That's what you're talking about, Mayor.
Okay.
That's what you're talking about, implied authority.
Right.
Within our legislative capacity here.
Okay.
But we can have a fuller report in two weeks?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, that sounds helpful. And then...
And then what were you going to say?
Manager Neil and I were having a conversation earlier this evening.
And I wanted an update on where we are on having the construction management plans. Are they just starting at a certain date, so if someone's already been under construction before that date, they don't have one? And who do we have currently that's going out? I know that we had a complaint in one of our letters that they didn't feel they should be the ones that have to call the police. But really, in many instances, they do because we can't have someone standing at a site 24 hours. So it does often have to be by complaint by a resident. And that's just the way that is. But could you explain to me currently what we're doing, either of you?
Carrie?
Yeah. Currently, we're, and it went into, went into effect, it was...
Yeah, currently, we're, and it went into, went into effect, it was about six weeks ago or so. So any construction project that came in after that date, we required the builder to sign that construction management plan, and we have that on file. It's, again, it's complaint basis, and it's our building inspectors. Wayne has hired a new employee in engineering that, that reviews some of that, the erosion control, those kind of things. But it's, it'd be a combination of our building department.
On file, is that available in a website format as well, so that a neighbor could go online and see what the--
Yeah, the construction management plan, just the, the form itself unsigned, the--
Oh, not the specific to the project?
Right, right.
Isn't that public information? Can't we put that on?
We could, sure.
I mean, it's just, we're talking about accountability, so I think that's accountability as well. It's also information to the residents. And when we, when we have a construction management plan signed, I know that we're putting up the sign with the contact, but it seems like a public information piece should somehow be going out as well to, or we should have one available if someone calls in about how to report in the different departments. And we've talked about this notion before, so I'm just wondering if that brochure pieces in production as well?
We're working on, a lot of this is work in progress as we're, as we're getting this all put together, but we're working on a one phone line where people can call, and they're, we would take that complaint and either direct it to the staff that's responsible or transfer that call. And as of right now, we just have the, the construction management plan as it's drafted online, but nothing more than that.
I have a question. For some reason, I was thinking that we had someone else other than who Wayne had just hired that was going to be able to go out and help us monitor these sites, an additional person other than currently who we have doing inspections, but that's not the case, I hear.
We, actually, we have a staff meeting tomorrow over the lunch hour to talk about exactly that issue because we do not have a, a single dedicated person whose job it is to, to manage this, this body of work in, in the community.
Well, I did hear, and there is no factual basis to this, but potentially, we could have 150 tear downs this year as opposed to the 100--
Yeah.
--that we had. And so to me, this problem isn't going to be smaller, and we don't, it's going to probably get bigger, and it's going to become, and then someone else stated that they wondered if we were doing our inspections in a timely manner for commercial work because we were going to be so overwhelmed. So my, my huge concern is, one, I don't saddle a department that might already be struggling to get everything done in a timely manner with this, and the fact that if we do have 150 tear downs as opposed to 100, that we have the financial ability to beef that up. So personally, I would say, I'm glad you're having a staffing meeting, but my question to you is, if it comes out that it needs to be an additional hours added from outside, I would support that.
I had a conversation, interesting conversations today with the community development director in Winnetka, Illinois. And Winnetka is a smaller city than Edina, but has some similarity, demographic similarities to Edina. It's on the north, north shore suburban community. They've been in, dealing with residential redevelopment somewhat like what we're experiencing now for about 15 years, actually. And so they had some interesting approaches to that issue that I think we could learn from, most of which we're doing. So there's a lot of similarities, but some of which we're not doing. But one of theirs is, is to have some kind of, of dedicated staff presence, whether it's new or it's old, but, but somebody whose job it is to go from site to site to site to site every day to see what's going on, to make sure that the contractors at each site know who that person is, to make sure that the neighbors around that site know who it is. But some voice that can speak both in a mediating tone and in a directive tone when necessary. So we are, that's, that's part of what we're looking at, but the other part of it that you've referenced is, is work that's probably coming your way in terms of regulatory changes. In Winnetka, for example, one of the requirements they have is that a residential site under redevelopment is fenced, the entire, along lot line to lot line with a six-foot chain link fence. They have, they have the ability, their community development director has the authority to stage redevelopment projects so that if there's one going on, on this block, you may not allow another one just across the street from it. So there's some, some authority in that way. They fund their staffing efforts on this with a, a pretty sizable demolition permit fee. So that's, that's $16,000, where ours is closer to $200. So there's, I'm not saying we should go to 16,000, and, and the fellow I spoke to said they didn't go, they went from $250 12 years ago to $16,000 today. So we're not saying, we will not, I will not say to you, that's what we ought to do too, but there's probably some room there. If those, if that is the, if that's an activity or an event that's causing us to incur additional public costs, then we should do the best we can to, to link up some kind of revenue source from that, from that event or activity. I think that's, that's what you'd like us to do, and so we're going to try to work with a proposal on that way too.
Well, I know our cost is more than $200.
Well, and we've had some correspondents, again, questioning. I think asbestos abatement is an issue that people are concerned about when there's no regulation or inspection that's accompanying demolition of a home from a certain era. I think there's also concern about what's happening with lead paint that may be in some of the homes in terms of what's being, again, evaluated, done for protection of the environment and surrounding neighbors. So I would certainly like to look at that. And then one change I think that we could implement internally that was brought to my attention is just the way that complaints are handled. I was told that we don't, we file them by date, and that there is not necessarily a circle back, and I would like to request that they be filed by, if it's cross filing, that's fine, but that they be filed by address, possibly also cross filed by builder, and that there be some kind of circling back so that the, we know at the different, in the different departments and different staff levels, how something has been responded to. Because I think that's, again, that people, it isn't so much, I think, to Councilmember Sprague's question. I think people are finding they have someone to call, and I think people are, that the police department is coming out on some of the parking issues, that, that there is a response. The question is, what are the penalties, what are the handling, and what is making something stop or a behavior not recur?
We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
And then I have one question. In the construction management plan, do we even talk about household trash? You know, we get refrigerators and stoves sitting out in front. That might be, as we look at what we have, that we may need to circle back to our own trash ordinance, but it probably needs to be stated on there that you can't just take the refrigerator and the stove, which my neighbor did down the road, and leave it there for three months. They finally got picked up, but, you know, I don't think that the neighbors should, they look at a construction site that's bad enough. They shouldn't have to look at the refrigerator and the stove sitting out there for three months.
I'd be surprised if our current set ordinances don't already address that, and maybe--
I think they probably do, but we probably need to add that so that they're aware that they're in our health ordinance already.
And do we need any kind of motion or action, or is this conversation sufficient?
I think I, I got the direction pretty clear. So that is what we will, we'll confer with the city attorney, and we'll take whatever kind of staff, both office staff and field staff, that he needs to talk to to kind of get a good feel of what, kind of what the logistics are that are experienced in the field, so that we can bring back some recommendations to you about, based on our current construction management plan, and what we can put into ordinance, and maybe what those penalties can be under the authority we have as a Plan B city. Okay?
Thank you. All right. Thanks for your, on the correspondence and petitions, anything other than what we had on the dais this evening?
Not anything.
Anything come in late? Okay. All right. Mayor and council comments. I think we start this week with Member Brindle.
Well, I'm going to be quick because it's my 36th wedding anniversary today, so I want to get out of here.
Okay. Take care of that.
Okay. All right, Joanie. That was quick.
Not, not as quick, but brief. Just one item. That is--
I want to know where you're going at 10 after 10 to celebrate.
I'm going home.
Oh, okay. All right, all right.
Congratulations to the Brindles. There is a town hall meeting with all three of the legislators representing Edina this Saturday morning at 10 o'clock at the community center. I do not have the exact room number, but it will begin at 10 o'clock, and the scheduled time is 10 to 11 a.m.
Okay, good. Thank you. Member Swenson?
And this is more a remark about all of us. We have our last night of interviews for boards and commissions. The applications were due last month, and by the end of the month, we'll be placing a number of people on new boards and commissions. It's been really fun, and we've had great support from Deb Mangan, and I would like to thank our city clerk very much for all the work that she's done getting us to this point, and tomorrow night when we finish. So thank you.
And feeding us.
And feeding us.
Keeping us, yeah.
Mm-hmm, which is important because we get Ollie.
Members Sprague?
Yes, I'm a man that can appreciate calories, so thank you for all the caloric input you've given me. 18 days until the polar plunge. Council members, get your pledges in. Come on. We need to get fired up. Need some money. That's all I got.
All right. We had the last of the MLC breakfast receptions over at the League of Minnesota Cities on the 8th. That covered those cities in the Northeast like Shoreview and Woodbury. That was a good session as well. On Saturday, the 9th, I attended a meeting with the Brookview Heights neighborhood. They met with Tim Hunter, our animal control officer, and talked about coyotes, and I thought Officer Hunter did a very good job of, of handling a delicate topic. It continues to be something that's rolling around in that neighborhood. I see a lot of emails on it. On the 6th, I also spoke to the Gyro Club. I had a PowerPoint, had a good document ready, and, and they, I didn't have a computer. So fortunately, it's a group of guys that never grew up with PowerPoint. They could have cared less. They just wanted the Q and A, was fine with them. On the 13th, I think John Gundy mentioned it, Member Swenson and I and Manager Neil met with Three Rivers to talk about accelerating the trail project, and you heard that report tonight. We're working on, there's a group over at, Met Council, working on the new regional solicitation criteria. And with this new federal reauthorization called MAP 21, it's going to cause us to maybe make some adjustments on the regional solicitation process. So I'll continue to work on that. That's, that's about it. Manager Neil?
We went to I-494.
Oh, yeah. We had a great meeting, I-494 Corridor Coalition, a breakfast, legislative breakfast meeting. And Charlie Zelli was there, Commissioner of Transportation, very nice of him to show up, and we got a good, we got a good session in there. Thanks, Mary.
I'll be brief as well. I think about almost a month ago, Councilmember Bennett and I attended a meeting at the Lynn Hurst Community Center with a group of Minneapolis residents who were exploring the creation of, of an airport advisory committee. And they were very interested in, in Edina, both the city and Edina residents being a part of their effort. They have kind of settled on a, a new name, and I don't know if you have heard this yet or not. They, they are going to be called the MSP Fair Skies Coalition. And their next meeting is Monday night at 7:00 at the Lynn Hurst Community Center again. If you have, if you have constituents who, who just, who really want to participate in a kind of a, a group like this, a citizen group like this, let me know who they are, or you can direct them to, to this group. They may not have a website yet, but they will probably by Monday.
Give us the name again.
The MSP Fair Skies Coalition. Fair skies.
And this would be a very good item to communicate to a neighborhood group--
It would.
--if we had neighborhood groups. But I, as I described in an email to one resident, I think there were about 20 people at the last meeting, no more than 30, and every chair in the room was filled. So it is a meeting that people are welcome to attend, but it's not a large room in which it's--
Probably be looking for a bigger room, too, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other item I'll tell you about is that tomorrow night at 5:00 in this room, Lunds and Byerly's is hosting the neighborhood meeting for the Byerly's Redevelopment Project. So that's kind of, that's, it's been in the public sphere, but tomorrow night, it really gets into the public sphere, and you'll probably begin to hear some more about that. And see, Mr. Nuenendorf is, is here for his portion of the meeting.
All right, good.
That's all that I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. I, I forgot to tell the council on Monday, I went over to the legislature to testify on two issues. One at the request of our Senator Melissa Fransen, which was the housing improvement areas, housing improvement districts. They were going to sunset that or potentially sunset it as a, as a tool. So she wanted me to testify on behalf of, of not having a sunset date any longer, but leaving the tool in place so that cities could use that tool. I spoke with Jeff Jacobs over in St. Louis Park and got some good information from him on how they have used it, and I told him we could potentially use it. We've had some inquiries in the past. So it, it made it out of committee with the, in the form that Senator Fransen wanted, wanted it to be. And then I also was asked to testify about ranked choice voting. Statutory cities don't have the ability to talk about ranked choice voting without going to the legislature for special legislation. Charter cities can have those discussions and make those decisions, just as many of us in St. Paul did. So they've got a bill over there that's a local option bill, giving local municipalities the ability to talk about it, at least to decide if it's right for them. And so I testified on that matter, and I think that's out of committee, too, with, with a passage. So that's it. And anything else other than that, if, if no one has anything, we'll adjourn this meeting and convene the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. All right. City council meeting stands adjourned, and we now call to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The first matter of business is to call, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Havelin?
Here. And then next is approval of minutes of the HRA regular meeting of February 5, 2013. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in the second there, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And the next matter, Mr. Nuenendorf, Resolution 2013-03.
Great, thank you. My choice of microphones tonight. I just, just have one item for you this evening to wrap it up. The renewal to authorize the 2013 Open to Business Program. Last year, in 2012, the city of Edina implemented an open to business program to provide free business consultation services to entrepreneurs based in Edina or who wish to open a business in Edina. The city contracted with a metropolitan consortium of community developers to actually provide that service. And in the first year, we're happy to announce that MCCD served 17 clients here in Edina. They provide consultation services on a wide variety of businesses, from optometry to cross, cross-cultural marketing, to move, classic moving box rental companies, restaurants, financial planners, a whole assortment of different business ideas. And these efforts resulted in the creation or retention of at least 23 jobs that they're aware of. In order to, to achieve these results, the MCCD also approved capital loans up to $80,000. And this is a business loan of last resort. And this is a business loan of last resort. These are the small companies, the small entrepreneurs that are not able to secure a traditional loan through a traditional lender. There've been recent articles in the Star Tribune about some of the successful companies that were funded using this program. In 2013, Hennepin County has again offered to split the costs of the services. The Hennepin County HRA will fund up to 50% of the $10,000 annual fee, leaving only a contribution of $5,000 from the city of Edina HRA. So the resolution in front of you tonight is to authorize the Open to Business Program in 2013. That would involve applying for the grant to Hennepin County. And then if successful, and we're told that we will be successful, there are funds available for us, then we would contract with the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers to continue this program in 2013.
No move.
All right. Discussion. Member Bennett.
I do have a question. And that is, when these jobs are moving into or taking place in offices through Edina, I understand that we would then benefit as a property tax-supported community, either through that, again, that rental or through that ownership. The materials that are attached to this describe a lot of activities taking place in homes or in coffee shops and the library. And then I'm wondering what the benefit to the local community is. I understand it's great to have people here to work and shop, but we don't have a local sales tax. We don't have a local income tax. So the only source of revenue that we have as a community from the business that takes place here is property tax. So can you tell me what the, and it works out, I think, for last year to be about $217.40 a job. So it's not a huge investment, and I understand it fits with some of the Community Development Block grant funding that we looked at earlier this evening. Also, although some of those services are provided at much less per person. So can, I am in, I favor the concept. I guess I would just like to know a little bit more about what the benefit is to our community. Thanks.
Sure. The purpose of the program is to really provide a robust array of business tools. For larger businesses, major corporations, international and national companies, there's major incentives from the state, from deed, through the HRA. We did the TIF loan. Those address large businesses. This program is the complete other end of the spectrum. This is the active recruiter who's operating a home-based business that thinks that they can expand this and hire two or three people. But they need some consultation, or perhaps they need access to funds that they would not otherwise have access to. So this program really is focused on a smaller niche of business entities that are really trying to get off the ground, or the other entities that are already running, but they need an extra capital infusion to actually rent that office and hire their first employee or hire their fifth employee. So it's really those small businesses and the success that can be achieved by allowing them to prosper here in Edina.
And the public purpose of that is? So I hear the purpose, and I understand that it accomplishes it. And I guess, I think this discussion is being held on a state level as well, that what is the public purpose of job creation? And I think it does benefit the state economy as a whole. It's just that locally, because of the part of the economy that we as a community are connected to and benefit from, it, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm...
No, that's fine. So the biggest public benefit is the fact that these services are not commercially available elsewhere. I mean, there are other programs out there. There's SCORE that addresses successful businesses that really are ready to go forward even better. But this is one, it really nurtures small businesses. So as far as the public benefit, I mentioned the, that the consortium provided access to $80,000 of capital. Those businesses could not have access to other capital. By providing that gap financing, and then the consortium provided that, not the city of Edina, it allowed those businesses to really go forward and create something. So in the spirit of creating the greater public good and a robust business community that has international businesses like Microsoft, national businesses like Southdale and Simon Property Group, and also local entrepreneurs that can hope to aspire to become a bigger, bigger, more robust business. So that's kind of the holistic public purpose. It's hard to put a specific number on it or a specific dollar amount or job creation, but it's that robust array of tools out there.
Member Brindle.
Well, the majority of businesses that really are part of this engine that we've got that we call Greater MSP are small businesses. And, I mean, I see this as a great opportunity if somebody's got a small business and this is what it's going to take to move that forward and get that initial capital that they need to have an office, to, as he said, add that third person, to move their business forward. I mean, it'd be nice if our community could provide that.
Scott has his pen in the air, and then I'll put my pen in the air.
That's how you know you're serious, is when you put your pen in the air.
Yeah, I know you. I recognize it now. It's my job to look for it.
I think just in answer to your question, Councilmember Bennett, I think there's a growing since 2000, since the Great Recession, there's a growing agreement that creating private sector jobs is a public purpose. And I think that's a new, that's a new phenomenon, at least in my career in city government. But that, when you ask, what is the public purpose of this program, I, that is what Mr. Smolin would tell you, that the government helping to create jobs, whether they're in the public sector or private sector, the act of job creation is being defined as a public purpose in programs like this one.
We had, I think, a discussion about this as an HRA at a work session, and I think it was a really productive discussion. I welcome it's being continued at future work sessions. And I think we had very strong consensus on the support being provided through the city with infrastructure and making this a good place to live, work, and do business. I think that the idea that there would be activity that is focused or that benefits the smaller or starting entrepreneur probably, to me, has stronger public purpose than a job creation program with no look at the sufficiency or the resources that are otherwise available to an entity or an individual.
I think if you believe that economic development, Member Swenson. I, sorry, I missed your pen. I'll put mine up next.
I'm just going to say that I see it as a public purpose, but in a broader way than Member Bennett does, because I see it as the ability for people in our community to do business with other people in our community, people in our community to be able to stay in their homes and be successful in businesses, along with using restaurants and other things in our community that keeps our community successful for all of us to enjoy. So I go to that broader world public purpose, and I can accept it for that.
And I was just going to say that if you believe that economic development has a public purpose, which I do, it makes your town a healthier place. And there's a lot of ways to do it. You can attract businesses, you can grow the ones you got, you can retain the ones you have, and you can help the small ones, the startups, get going. So that innovation factor, the entrepreneurship factor, they all come into play in helping make your town a more vital place. And that's, those are some of the strategies that we're working on here. That's why we've got you hired, in part, is to help us become stronger from an economic development standpoint.
My pen?
All right. So, get your pen up.
I'm just saying, looking at some of the, back to the job creation public purpose, but looking to some of the subsidies around the country for businesses to retain job, I mean, the numbers are ridiculous, you know, paying hundreds of thousands of dollars per job. And, you know, the data is not always the best. So I think in this case, we're getting an incredible bang for the buck. And we're starting at the grassroots business level with the true entrepreneurs who are trying to reach for something better and creating these, create these new, new services and for the residents of our community to enjoy, as you said. And one of the things that impacted me during the Grand View process was this symbiotic relationship between the retail and service industry and our residents, and how much they respect and enjoy each other's company. And I think that's a reflection of that symbiosis here.
Okay, good. All right. So called a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And we stand adjourned.